Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, December 13th, 2002. It is now 10:15 a.m. and we have five members present. We do need 10 members for a quorum. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 a.m. and meetings are open to the public. We invite you to join us. For those unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. This being Friday, even though we are shy of a quorum, as is customary, we have a series of presentations and introductions scheduled. So, to begin with this portion of today's meeting, let me recognize Councilmember Ruth Galanter.
Are we going to be on camera? I promised the girls they'd be on camera.
We are on camera.
We are on camera.
We're live.
Okay, we're just listed up there, so... Ah, there we go, okay. Ladies, I'd like to... Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the Girl Scouts of the San Fernando Valley who are here this morning to join me at the podium. They are here with the President of the Council, Rose Kukla, the Executive Director, Jerry Keshka, and these are some of our leaders of tomorrow. Come on up here, girls. Now, if you can't see yourself up there, then get in front here. So, Vanessa, you need to be up here. See, there you are. Where's Alyssa? Okay. Now, we're here this morning not just because Girl Scouts are a good thing, but Girl Scouts are a good thing. We're here this morning because the Girl Scouts have a new patch that girls can honor. It's called the Ms. President Patch. All of us in government should take note. Did it already fall down? The Girl Scouts of America have something called the White House Project, and I will... I think you can figure out what that means. That means that the women of tomorrow are getting ready to take over the White House. And we fully expect that by the time the... Indeed! Yes. So, what I asked them to do was come in this morning and share with us in the City Council some of what they're doing and why they're doing it. You see a copy of the badge down here, I hope. We'll hold it up later. And it's my pleasure to present the Girl Scouts of the San Fernando Valley with a City Council Resolution congratulating you on what you're doing, but I'm going to give it to you after we hear from Jerry Keshka, who is the Executive Director, and then from at least one of the girls, maybe more, and then I believe that they have presents for some of us, the female some of us, because this is, after all, the Girl Scouts of America. And we grown-up girls feel like we're at least honorary members. So, let me start by introducing Jerry Keshka, the Executive Director of the Girl Scouts of the San Fernando Valley.
Ms. Galanter? Ms. Grue would like to say a few words as well.
Well, can she wait till we have the whole presentation?
Sure. Thank you, Councilwoman Galanter. Today's Girl Scout, more than ever, has many options when dreaming about what she wants to be when she grows up. She may choose her place in the kitchen as the world's premier chef or behind a president's desk in the Oval Office. And one day, very soon, a woman's place will have no boundaries at all. We're here today because the Girl Scouts are launching a new initiative called the Ms. President's Patch. This will give each girl a chance to discover some amazing accomplishments of women leaders through the years and, if she chooses, to become one herself. This patch is a collaboration between the Girl Scouts and the White House Project, a nonpartisan organization dedicated to advancing women's leadership. It is not enough to see one or two female faces in the sea of dark-suited men in powerful political positions. The only way to ensure the House, the Senate, the Governor's Office, and the White House are equally filled with women is to pack the political pipeline now with young women who will gain experience and knowledge about politics and prepare for future campaigns for the highest office. With the Ms. President's Patch, mentors, connections, and opportunities for hands-on experience will make political involvement easier and more appealing to girls. The Ms. President's Patch echoes the core values of Girl Scouting: character, conduct, and community service. We want to continue to enthuse today's girls to become tomorrow's leaders all the way to the Oval Office. Throughout Girl Scouting, girls are gaining the tools and the confidence needed to succeed as a wife and a CEO, as a mother and a senator, as a president of the PTA and a president of the USA. The time is right for a woman president. According to a recent Roper poll, 76 percent of Americans said they are ready for a woman president. Girl Scouts of the San Fernando Valley recognize the power that the Los Angeles City Council members have to influence public perception of women in high-level positions. It is our role to encourage girls to recognize their potential as leaders at all levels. Girl Scouts who complete the Ms. President's Patch will see women in political office not as unreachable icons, but rather as role models they can emulate and follow. Alyssa Lotta would like to talk for a minute about why she is a Girl Scout.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I thank you all for coming here today, and right now, I would like to tell you how I like Girl Scouts. It is very fun going to Girl Scout meetings. At Girl Scout meetings, we talk about things we might do and sometimes pass out patches from things we've already done. Sometimes at meetings, we even read about the history of Girl Scouts, but the part I like most about Girl Scouts is that you get to meet new friends, and that is a good thing. I am in my fifth year of Girl Scouts, and I love it. I will be a junior Girl Scout this year, but for now, I am a Brownie, and that is why I like Girl Scouts. Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Good for you. Good job.
Jessica, do you want to talk? Okay. And Jessica also has a short... Vanessa. I mean, Vanessa also has a short talk she'd like to do.
I'll tell you what. How's that?
Good morning, guests and Girl Scouts. My name is Vanessa Lotta. I am six years old. I started Girl Scouts as a Daisy in kindergarten. Now, I am a first-grade Brownie. My mom is my troop leader. I have learned a lot of things in Girl Scouts, like being polite, respecting others, loving others, and doing good things for others. I have learned how to learn and listen. I have learned how to make new friends and keep my old ones. We do arts and crafts at our meetings and learn about recycling and how saving endangered species. I wear my Brownie smile every day. I love Girl Scouts. I want to be a Girl Scout every day. Thank you.
I would just like, in addition to Vanessa and Alyssa Lotta here today, I'd like to introduce the other girls. We have Gabriella Oterra and Allison Orsorio and Monique Guzman, and their adult leaders with them today are Sofiara Lara and Maria Oterra. Thank you all. I believe the girls have a presentation.
Now, before... Girls, before you get to do this, first of all, I think we should give another hand to Vanessa and Alyssa, because it's not easy getting up in front of a crowd of people and making a speech. Good job, ladies. So, let me present this to all of you. Don't get your head behind it. This is a resolution from the City of Los Angeles to the Girl Scouts and the Girl Scouts of the San Fernando Valley for your leadership in setting up the Ms. President Patch and getting started on the White House Project and getting started on the road to the White House. And I think before we turn you loose to do the other... To hand out the gifts, that there were some other council members who will want to say something. I think you made an impression here today, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Galanter. I'm so glad that you brought the Girl Scouts in. I had the opportunity, I think it was just two weeks ago, where they had an event to educate people about Girl Scouts and Brownies, and I was both a Brownie and a Girl Scout. And I'm trying to remember the, you know, have a smile in my pocket, whatever, if you can, you know, sing that, but it's been a few years. But I just want to thank the leaders, particularly, and the young people, because you spoke, didn't you? Vanessa, right? You spoke at that breakfast we had, and she was once again articulate and really continue on in a Brownie or Girl Scout. Someday, you could become a City Council member too, but make sure you get all your badges on the way. But I just want to thank the leaders. They're really trying to bring back the Girl Scouts and Brownies in many areas that we didn't have it, that have gone by the wayside, and look forward to working with all of you. Thank you, Councilwomen.
They didn't make statements like, "We're getting... We're going to the White House."
That's right. Exactly.
That's right. This is the new, modern Girl Scout. So, guys, watch out.
Forget City Council, right to the White House. I think that's a very good idea. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Ms. LeBunch?
The Council, I want to congratulate the Girl Scouts and the wonderful stories that were spoken and speeches, and it's a great day. And I also want to thank the Girl Scouts for how they see the whole world and hope the Boy Scouts can learn. I was a Boy Scout, and I know the importance of scouting and the importance of parental involvement and the opportunity for young people to be with others and to make new friends. What a wonderful thing that you do as Girl Scout. So, I just want to salute you and let you know how important you are. That's right, Ruth. God bless Ruth Galanter, because she is a great scout for the environment. So, let's salute all of us.
You noticed that they all learned about recycling.
That's right.
I'm going to have them check the wastebaskets as we go around here.
Thank you.
That's it? We're done? Okay, ladies, we have, for the Councilwomen, we have a couple of gifts, so if... Oh, and somebody's got one for me.
Can I just say one thing I forgot to say, which I usually never do? Thanks for the greatest cookies in the whole wide world.
Yes, everybody knows the cookies.
Coming up in March.
Coming up in March. They'll take orders today.
And you want to give your book? And she's going to read what she got?
Now, this is what I got. I got a book that says, "Can a Girl Run for President?", and the subtitle is, "You Have the Power to Influence Your World Around You." So, here they come, guys. We need a couple of you on that side. Cindy's on that side, and I don't know if Jan is here yet. And Wendy is on this side.
Ms. Hahn is on the way, and if we can have someone accept on behalf of Ms. Perry as well.
Thank you.
For our next presentation, the chair recognizes Councilmember Grue.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. If I could ask all of my constituents here to the right to stand up who are celebrating the Day of the Horse. The Day of the Horse is a fair and horse show to celebrate the role of the horse in our society and history. The state of California...
As the world's premier chef or behind a president's desk in the Oval Office. And one day, very soon, a woman's place will have no boundaries at all. We're here today because the Girl Scouts are launching a new initiative called the Miss President's Patch. This will give each girl a chance to discover some amazing accomplishments of women leaders through the years and, if she chooses, to become one herself. This patch is a collaboration between the Girl Scouts and the White House Project, a nonpartisan organization dedicated to advancing women's leadership. It is not enough to see one or two female faces in the sea of dark-suited men in powerful political positions. The only way to ensure the House, the Senate, the Governor's Office, and the White House are equally filled with women is to pack the political pipeline now with young women who will gain experience and knowledge about politics and prepare for future campaigns for the highest office. With the Miss President's Patch mentors, connections, and opportunities for hands-on experience will make political involvement easier and more appealing to girls. The Miss President's Patch echoes the core values of Girl Scouting: character, conduct, and community service. We want to continue to enthuse today's girls to become tomorrow's leaders all the way to the Oval Office. Throughout Girl Scouting, girls are gaining the tools and the confidence needed to succeed as a wife and a CEO, as a mother and a senator, as a president of the PTA and a president of the USA. The time is right for a woman president. According to a recent Roper poll, 76% of Americans said they are ready for a woman president. Girl Scouts of the San Fernando Valley recognize the power that the Los Angeles City Council members have to influence public perception of women in high-level positions. It is our role to encourage girls to recognize their potential as leaders at all levels. Girl Scouts who complete the Miss President's Patch will see women in political office not as unreachable icons, but rather as role models they can emulate and follow. Alyssa Lara would like to talk for a minute about why she is a Girl Scout.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I thank you all for coming here today, and right now, I would like to tell you how I like Girl Scouts. It is very fun going to Girl Scout meetings. At Girl Scout meetings, we talk about things we might do and sometimes pass out patches from things we've already done. Sometimes at meetings, we even read about the history of Girl Scouts. But the part I like most about Girl Scouts is that you get to meet new friends, and that is a good thing. I am in my fifth year of Girl Scouts, and I love it. I will be a junior Girl Scout this year, but for now, I am a Brownie, and that is why I like Girl Scouts. Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Good for you. Good job.
Jessica, do you want to talk? Okay. And Jessica also has a short, I mean Vanessa also has a short talk she'd like to do.
I'll tell you what. How's that?
Good morning, guests and Girl Scouts. My name is Vanessa Lara. I am six years old. I started Girl Scouts as a Daisy in kindergarten. Now I am a first-grade Brownie. My mom is my troop leader. I have learned a lot of things in Girl Scouts, like being polite, respecting others, loving others, and doing good things for others. I have learned how to learn and listen. I have learned how to make new friends and keep my old ones. We do arts and crafts at our meetings and learn about recycling and how saving endangered species. I wear my Brownie smile every day.
I love Girl Scouts. I want to be a Girl Scout every day. Thank you.
I would just like, in addition to Vanessa and Alyssa Lara here today, I'd like to introduce the other girls. We have Gabriella Otero and Allison Orsorio and Monique Guzman. And their adult, our adult leaders with them today are Sofia Lara and Maria Otero. Thank you all. I believe the girls have a presentation.
Now, before, girls, before you get to do this, first of all, I think we should give another hand to Vanessa and Alyssa, because it's not easy getting up in front of a crowd of people and making a speech. Good job, ladies. So, let me present this to all of you. Don't get your head behind it. This is a resolution from the City of Los Angeles to the Girl Scouts and the Girl Scouts of the San Fernando Valley for your leadership in setting up the Miss President's Patch and getting started on the White House Project and getting started on the road to the White House. And I think before we turn you loose to do the other, to hand out the gifts, that there were some other council members who will want to say something. I think you made an impression here today, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Galanter. I'm so glad that you brought the Girl Scouts in. I had the opportunity, I think it was just two weeks ago, where they had an event to educate people about Girl Scouts and Brownies. And I was both a Brownie and a Girl Scout, and I'm trying to remember the, you know, have a smile in my pocket, whatever, if you can, you know, sing that. But it's been a few years. But I just want to thank the leaders particularly and the young people, because you spoke, didn't you? Vanessa, right? You spoke at that breakfast we had, and she was once again articulate and really continue on in a Brownie or Girl Scout. Someday, you could become a City Council member too, but make sure you get all your badges on the way. But I just want to thank the leaders. They're really trying to bring back the Girl Scouts and Brownies and many areas that we didn't have it, that have gone by the wayside, and look forward to working with all of you. Thank you, Councilwomen.
They didn't make statements like, "We're getting, we're going to the White House."
That's right. Exactly.
That's right. This is, this is the new, modern Girl Scout. So, guys, watch out.
Forget City, forget City Council, right to the White House. I think that's a very good idea. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mr. Labange.
To the Council, I want to congratulate the Girl Scouts and the wonderful stories that were spoken and speeches, and it's a great day. And I also want to thank the Girl Scouts for how they see the whole world and hope the Boy Scouts can learn. I was a Boy Scout, and I know the importance of scouting and the importance of parental involvement and the opportunity for young people to be with others and to make new friends. What a wonderful thing that you do as Girl Scouts. So, I just want to salute you and let you know how important you are. That's right, Ruth. God bless Ruth Galanter, because she is a great scout for the environment. So, let's salute all of us.
You noticed that they all learned about recycling.
That's right.
I'm going to have them check the wastebaskets as we go around here.
Thank you.
That's it? We're done? Okay, ladies, we have, for the Councilwomen, we have a couple of gifts, so if, oh, and somebody's got one for me.
Can I just say one thing I forgot to say, which I usually never do? Thanks for the greatest cookies in the whole wide world.
Yes, everybody knows the cookies.
Coming up in March.
Coming up in March. They'll take orders today.
And you want to give her that book? And she can read what she got?
Now, this is what I got. I got a book that says, "Can a Girl Run for President?", and the subtitle is, "You Have the Power to Influence Your World Around You." So, here they come, guys. We need a couple of you on that side. Cindy's on that side, and I don't know if Jan is here yet. And Wendy is on this side.
Ms. Hahn is on the way, and if we can have someone accept on behalf of Ms. Perry as well.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. If I could ask all of my constituents here to the right to stand up who are celebrating the Day of the Horse. The Day of the Horse is a fair and horse show to celebrate the role of the horse in our society and history. The state of California has declared December 14th, 2002, as the Day of the Horse in honor of the valuable economic, cultural, and recreational role horses play in California. This is a diverse event, from charros and cowboy-mounted shooting to vaulting and drill team. The resident charros and, I'm not sure I'm going to pronounce this right, is that Ginets?
Ginetes.
Ginetes, okay. Are the living embodiment of California's ranching heritage, practicing a unique art of riding and horse training passed down through the generations. Together with my colleague and President of City Council, Alex Padilla, and Recreation and Parks, we're cosponsoring this event tomorrow in Councilmember Padilla's office, Padilla's district. Many of you know that horsekeeping and horsekeeping rights and Ed Reyes, my partner in crime on that, are fighting to ensure that we can protect this rich cultural heritage in the city of Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley, particularly. Janice Hahn, who isn't here yet, but she and I went horseback riding with 80 members of the community through Hanson Dam and at Lake, we met at Lakeview Terrace. We're going to get, Ed, I know, wants to come out, and I know Alex Padilla, come out and horseback ride and really see the beautiful part of our city. So, I wanted to have this opportunity to thank individuals behind me that are here today, and I have names and I hope we haven't forgotten anyone. Deborah Baumann, who is the Day of the Horse event coordinator, Fritz Bonner, Director of Warhorse and Militia Heritage Foundation, Otis Wallace, the owner of Wallace Ranch livery stable. Seal Berman, the composer of Lakeview Terrace. Those of you may recall Seal, who is here behind me, sang at our council meeting out in my district. Rick Hawthorne, the Director of Valley View Vaulters, Frank Padilla, Francisco Rodriguez, and Bart Paul and Heidi Paul from the Foothill Trails Neighborhood Council, which I also want to present a proclamation. So, I encourage you all to come out tomorrow for the Day of the Horse, and if you're not there, just remember that today, tomorrow is the Day of the Horse and a day in which we can celebrate that rich cultural heritage in our city and appreciate all of your support as we move forward on a lot of items to protect that community and our horse areas. So, I just want to present to Deb Baumann, the Day of the Horse. Happiness is to celebrate this day and to thank you for all of your leadership on this as well as the Foothill Trails. I'm not sure who's going to come up. Is that Seal or Heidi or Bert?
Bart.
Bart? It's a long morning already. Bart Paul from the Foothill Trails Neighborhood Council. Would you all like to say a few words real quick?
Before we hear from them, let me recognize Councilmember and El Charro Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Grue, I want to just thank you for coming. The charro uniform, the outfit, the symbolism, there's a lot of pride in our city as those of us who want to see equestrian projects and developments occur. In our general plan, we have equestrian trails that connect the hills of the Arroyo into Illusion Park up to Griffith Park and actually loops into the valley. And I'm not sure if many people know that. There are so many benefits to our community when we could respect the tradition of our horse legacy. And thank you, Councilwoman Grue, for making sure that we continue to celebrate that. Many folks should understand that it's not only about horse trails. When you have open space, we're also talking about how we enhance our watershed, how we enhance our ability to get some relief from metropolis like Los Angeles, and our generations deserve that relief. And it's the culture that you keep alive, the investment you've made, and to be able to celebrate this in many different ways is beautiful. And all the young folks who don't know that the Spanish tradition with the horses, the charros, were here 300 years before even the United States was founded in the West Coast. It's a rich tradition. I just want to thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Labange.
Councilmember Grue, thank you for doing this special proclamation for the Day of the Horses. Ed, what you just spoke of too, there was a neighbor of mine who was 86 years old when I lived in Atwater Village who would ride up the Los Angeles River to Tahunga Wash to Pacoima on Sundays and gather with others in the 30s and 40s. And now, you're all here today. Too bad. It reminds me, if we could see all your horses too, how exciting that would be, but...
We tried that, but they wouldn't allow us to bring the horses inside City Hall.
They did in the movie Chinatown. You know, they ran the sheep in here when they wanted to raise the water rates. Jack Nicholson was sitting right there. But anyway, 56 miles of beautiful bridle trails at Griffith Park, and all the corrals sometimes come in January with your big ride. And one of the most exciting days is members on top of Mount Hollywood, where you'll see about 400 horses that gather for their big all-day ride in Griffith Park. It's just wonderful to protect and remember the horses as Ed spoke over 300 years ago, a dominant factor. I talked to someone last night who was talking about transit, Dan Bernstein from the Hollywood West Community Council, and he said when they first brought out the subway in New York over almost 100 years ago, they said they'll never replace the horse, you know. But his horse is still here, so let's keep it, keep it in and involved in our community life. Thank you, Wendy, for all you're doing and raising the bar.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Or the saddle.
Please, go ahead, Dan.
All of us here would just like to thank Councilmembers Grue and Padilla for their support for Day of the Horse. It wouldn't have happened without the two of you and your office and your staff. And also, we'd like to especially thank Councilmember Reyes for coming out the month before last for our plum meeting on our issues, and it was great. We still expect to see you horseback soon. And for those of you who didn't see Janice Hahn riding, that was, you know, you missed something. That was great. We hope to get her out again also.
Thank you very much, members of the Council and Councilman Reyes. I want to thank you for mentioning the watershed issues associated with our area. The Hanson Dam Basin is 1,400 acres that currently are beautiful wildlife trails and all of the caballeros, the charros, the cowboys, the cowgirls. We use the trails, but also thousands of angelinos use these trails to get away from the urban environment and just enjoy an hour or two of nature, just a few minutes from their homes. And this is a very important area for that reason too. And I want to invite you, please, all come out to Day of the Horse and see our beautiful area, see our beautiful horses, see the charro and the cowboy community come together to put on a show that involves many different cultural elements of horses. And also, although it is true that horses have played a giant role in the history of California, let us not forget that there are actually more horses in our area today than there were 100 years ago. The horse is just growing as a recreational and as an industry. It brings millions of dollars of revenue into the city coffers through the horse businesses, and it's a very important part of our city's economy. And Councilman Reyes, we look forward to you bringing your daughters tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I'm here to congratulate all of you on the Day of the Horse and want to thank my colleague, Wendy Grue, for inviting me that day for a wonderful two-hour. I felt every moment of it.
How did you walk the next day? I had a little trouble myself.
But you know what? It was, it was great for me personally. I grew up riding horses in Griffith Park on Saturdays with my dad. He would take me horseback riding, so I was a real horse lover as a young girl and sort of left that, left that behind, but it was fun for me to do it again. And, you know, it's hard to really listen to the issues and understand the problems that you have unless you're really out there on a horse, seeing what you go through in terms of having to coexist with streets and traffic and, and all the things that you have to do just to enjoy a beautiful horse ride. So, I challenge all my council members to join Wendy and I on our next ride where we can also spend another time listening to your issues and trying to do what we can to protect all of you who truly do love horses and want to keep that as a part of your life.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. And to any of you who can get out to that part of the city of Los Angeles and participate in any of the activities, especially at the Equestrian Center at Hanson Dam, you'll never believe you're in the city of Los Angeles. For our next presentation, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Nick Pacheco.
Mr. President and colleagues, I want to bring up one of our constituents, Mr. Art Romero. Arturo?
Where's my mom? Where's my mom and dad?
Back way back there at the last line.
Where?
Way back there.
Let me also bring up someone else. Don Laudrup Pacheco? Come on up. It's my dad. Ben? What? No, no. I'm bringing up my dad because my dad is a very good friend of Arturo Romero, and they've, they met once I got elected, so. We wanted to recognize Arturo. And for everyone, this is my father, Laudrup Pacheco. As you know, the parks in our district and in the entire city of Los Angeles are an important part of what we provide to our constituents and especially our youth and our children. We give them places to feel safe, places to participate in local activities, and hopefully, as was the case in my situation when I was growing up, pretty much kept me out of trouble and got me involved in sports and becoming a better person through that team spirit and understanding of being part of a team. Arturo Romero has been on the Volunteer Neighborhood Oversight Committee for Alserino, Alserino Park, for Alserino Park, and has been doing a great job there, and we wanted to recognize him for all his contributions to not only the 14 council district, but to the city of Los Angeles. And we wanted to let him know that we really appreciate all his work and what he brings to the city of Los Angeles as a resident and as someone who cares deeply about our children and their future. So, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and the 14 council district, I want to present this certificate of appreciation to you, Arturo Al Romero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank Mr. Romero for all his good work. Mr. Romero, he's been very active in the community for many years. I've seen him involved in many different events, a lot of the political campaigns, and he's been a great supporter of our community. So, thank you for being there and for your insight in how we can work with our neighborhoods. So, again, congratulations. Señor Pacheco, felicidades. Tener un hijo que ha construido tanto para nuestras vecindades, nuestras ciudades, felicidades a usted.
I would like to thank most of the politicians for, for their hard work and dedication, and also, I would like to ask, you know, some of the city members to, to get, start, you know, volunteering on some of the actions, you know, committees, and they will put more time into, you know, so the kids can get supervised, and they're really needed out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Before moving on to the next presentation, members of the council, let's take a brief pause and go through the agenda, call matters special, and then return to presentations when consent items have been handled. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum now. Would you please call the roll?
Bernson, Galanter, Garcetti, Grue, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, sign, Padilla, 12 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First item of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Holden seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves, and Ms. Grue seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are two confirmations of city officials. Item number two is confirmation of Elliot Boyd to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, and a public hearing has been held in committee.
Okay, if you can come forward at this time. Members, public hearing on this commission nominee has been held in committee. We have a committed report before us, and public hearing satisfied. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Hearing no such motion, the Chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, and Mr. Boyd, we, we did our best to embarrass you when you were before the Budget and Finance Committee, so I'll try to, I'll try to make it brief here. As we discussed at that committee, this is an extraordinarily important assignment because people's lives, people's families, people's hopes and dreams are at stake in the decisions that you will be making. Your background gives you really a unique ability to make extraordinary, and I think, you know, really good, positive decisions as you, as you manage these, these pension funds, and, and I think you're going to do a terrific job, and the people of the city are lucky that you're going to give of your time, so much of which you already give in the philanthropic area, that you're going to give of your time here in public service. So, thank you very much for taking this on, and I wish you all the best, and, and I think you're going to get confirmed today. I just got a feeling. Good luck, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Please close the roll on confirmation and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Congratulations, you are confirmed, and thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
Forthwith on this item, please. Next item.
Item number three is also a confirmation of Rodolfo F. Ruiz to the Animal Services Commission.
If Mr. Ruiz is here, if he can come forward.
And a public hearing has been held in committee.
Public hearing have been held in committee. A motion would be required to reopen the public hearing here in the full council. Is Mr. Ruiz with us? Ms. Misakowski.
I was just informed that the nominee is in court, is on his way down. We can either hold it or move on it at this point, but he was in court.
Which is your desire, Ms. Misakowski?
This is public safety. We did discuss with him and meet with him in public safety, so I will recommend confirmation.
Okay. Are there any other members of the council wishing to speak? At this time, seeing none. Public hearings haven't been held. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll on the confirmation of Mr. Ruiz? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number one is an item notice for public hearing planning land use management committee report has been submitted, and there is a card on the item.
We do have cards on item number one. Let's hold that on the desk. Let's call that special.
Public hearing has been held, but we do need to call it special.
Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Items for which public hearings have, have been held, items four through 12.
Members, items four through 12 now before us. Are there any requests for items to be called special? Mr. Weiss?
On behalf of Mr. Labange, let's call four special.
Item four called special for Mr. Labange. Any other specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved.
Councilmember, Mr. Padilla, could we have 11 go forthwith, please?
Forthwith on item 11. Next items, please.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 13 through 15.
Items 13 through 15 now before us. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. We shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Members wishing to call any specials? Mr. Zine. Any specials? Items 13 through 15? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved.
On the continuation agenda, item number 16 is an item notice for public hearing.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Item 16, we shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Mr. Zine.
Special on 16, please.
Item 16 called special by Mr. Zine. Next item, please.
Item number 17 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Public hearing has previously been held on item 17. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Seeing no such motion, Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, just a simple technical amendment, and I've been holding this up for such time that we could work with the department to make sure the amendment is satisfactory to both of us.
Okay.
And to the body, hopefully. That we amend 4B to read as follows. LHD, in conjunction with the city attorney's office, is to continue to explore other potential funding mechanisms that might exclude the administrative fees to be paid by the property owner. And that's an amendment that we worked on and that it's acceptable. Amend recommendation 4B to include... funding mechanisms that might exclude the administrative fees to be paid by the property owner. And that's an amendment that we worked on and that it's acceptable. Amend recommendation 4B to include.
Recommendation 4B on item 17.
To include.
Okay. Is there a second? Ms. Gruel seconds, Mr. Holden's amending motion. Is there any discussion on the amending motion? Seeing none, then I believe it can be accepted as a friendly amendment. Other members wishing to be heard on item 17? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll on item 17 as amended? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
The next item on the regular agenda, Mr. President, is the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold all closed session items on the desk, please.
Do you wish to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting? You do have that, or do you wish to go back into presentations?
Okay, we do have a special meeting agenda today. It is after 10:30 a.m. Let's temporarily recess the regular meeting agenda. And Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll on the special meeting?
Bernsen Galanter Garcetti, Gruel Han, Holden Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Sign Padilla, 12 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The special meeting is now in session. First item, please.
The first item on the special meeting is an item for which public hearing has been held. It's a Housing, Community and Development Committee Report and Resolution Regarding Issuance of Tax Exempt and Taxable Multifamily Housing Revenue Bonds.
Item number one of the special meeting agenda before us. Public hearings haven't been held. Are there any members wishing to call item number one special? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number two is an item for which public hearing has not been held. It's a communication from the City Attorney and CAO and Office of Finance to report relative to waiving penalties and interest charges on grocery receipts.
And I do have speaker cards on item two of the special meeting agenda. Let's call that special. Returning now.
Do you wish to recess the special meeting and go back to the regular meeting?
Yes, Madam Clerk. Let's return now to the regular meeting agenda. And if we've gone through the agenda, call matters special. Let us return now to the presentation segment of today's meeting. For our next presentation, the chair recognizes Councilmember Labange.
Mr. President. I wanted to recognize that we have King Middle School here. Stand up. King Middle School is down here today. There are students from a fine public middle school. Give them a big hand. I'm going to visit with them for a few minutes, but I also want to thank them and hope they enjoy their experience at City Hall and let you know that I also went to King Middle School and enjoyed the great, my homeroom was 121, Mr. John Minzer, who was a great teacher. But I want to thank you and ask the council to recognize King Middle School and all the fine students and teachers and parents here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Now, we're going to go in another room.
For our next presentation?
We're going to call on Jack Weiss for Music Week, because music makes the rules.
We're not quite there yet, Mr. Labange. For our next presentation, the chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm going to be joined by Councilmember Gruel, and I would like to invite Inspectors Gordon and Paxton and the other reps from the Housing Department up. Come on. On the phone and working as we speak. That's the way we like it. Colleagues, today, I'm very pleased to take a moment to honor some of the men, and in this case, just men, but we have men and women who are working daily in all of our districts. Not often seen, not often recognized, this is a team of inspectors that have dedicated their careers to making sure that Los Angeles' residents who rent apartments have safe, decent, habitable places to live. They are every slumlord's worst nightmare. Our Los Angeles Housing Department's Code Enforcement Team. Will you please give them a round of applause? Slum housing is a major problem in many parts of the city, particularly in the 13th District and many of your districts, too. I recognize that the majority of landlords are good, honest businesspeople, but there is a minority of bad landlords, the ones whose tenants are living in rat-infested buildings with crumbling walls, dysfunctional plumbing, mold, lead, and the works. I've visited this kind of housing in my district, and I'll tell you that after even a brief visit to one of these buildings, I felt physically sick for a day when some of the lead paint got into my lungs. Imagine what it's like for a child who grows up there. The landlords of these buildings, make no mistake about it, are criminals. They terrorize the lives of too many low-income tenants in the city, and it is only throughout, through aggressive code enforcement and prosecution that we will ever put a stop to this behavior. Today, I want to recognize the work of a few inspectors who work in my district. They've gone above and beyond the call of duty to bring one of CD-13's slumlords to justice. There was a slumlord who was facing criminal charges brought by the City Attorney's Office. However, this particular slumlord was not showing up at scheduled court hearings, so we had a warrant for his arrest. Senior Inspector Keith Gordon and Principal Inspector Jeff Paxton learned of this case and of the warrant while talking to the City Attorney in court on another case. They took it upon themselves to familiarize themselves with the case, obtain a copy of the warrant, talk with the watch commander at Rampart Station, and visit the owner's properties, and ultimately locate this slumlord. Immediately after making contact, they had the quick thinking to flag down a black-and-white that was passing by, which was able to transport the slumlord for booking. So, thanks to their quick thinking, their skilled investigation of this case, their teamwork, their dedication, their work with other parts of the city, like the City Attorney and the LAPD, there is one less slumlord evading the justice system in CD-13 and in the City of Los Angeles. It's a small victory, but an important one in the much larger fight against slum housing in this city. It sends a clear message to other landlords, and I hope that they're out there listening today, that if you're a bad landlord, if you're a slumlord, letting tenants live in slum conditions is a crime, and we're coming after you. It's not a cheap way to make a buck, and it will not go unpunished in this city. Our inspectors are watching, and there is no place to hide. So, before we hear from Inspector Gordon, Inspector Paxton, and also from Code Enforcement, I think we're going to have Domingo Soseyo, the Director of Code Enforcement, Scott McGill, Wayne Durand, and David Cassian, but we just have, are they here as well? Oh, they're coming up. Good. Don't be shy. Come on up. I'm going to turn it over to the Chair of the Housing and Community Development Committee, Wenny Gruel, for a few words, and then I'll present the certificates.
Well, I think if you see these guys behind you coming to your door, be worried. They are going to enforce our laws to ensure that slum housing does not exist in the City of Los Angeles. I don't know how many of you, of my colleagues, who have gotten calls from individuals who are tenants in these buildings, having nowhere to go, feeling that there's no one advocating for them, and that they are alone out there trying to deal with really slum conditions in their apartment buildings. And these individuals behind us have really taken a leadership role, and the Code Enforcement Program has continued to grow, in some ways unfortunately, because we have found additional buildings that fall under that category. But I want to congratulate Councilmember Garcetti for taking the lead and honoring them today, because they go into these places that many of us would never want to step in the door, and we realize that people live in these, in these apartment units. And so, we look forward to their continued efforts and their real dedication to ensuring that we have safe housing in the City of Los Angeles. Councilmember Garcetti, and Councilmember Reyes, and myself, and Janice Han on the Housing Committee have really been advocating to increase affordable housing in the City of Los Angeles and to ensure that the housing that is built and the housing that we're rehabilitating is safe and sanitary for our residents. So, I just want to congratulate our Code Enforcement inspectors and their leadership, keep up the good work, and encourage also those of you that are out in the community listening today, that you do have someone on your side. There is someone with a white hat that's coming out to help you and your neighborhoods. So, thank you very much, Eric, for your, for your leadership, and thank you again to the Code Enforcement inspectors that are here with us today.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Reyes. And I hope you'll join me, Principal Inspector Jeff Paxton, for your excellent service to the City of Los Angeles through your work in the Los Angeles Housing Department's Code Enforcement Program. Congratulations.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Garcetti, Councilmember Gruel, I want to thank you.
I'm sorry. Yeah, please, go ahead.
It's okay. I want to just thank you for bringing forward these fine people who are doing a lot of work for us. The other day, I asked for statistics to see how many cases we have open. In District One, we have close to 1,200 cases that are open. The other, end of the spectrum, we have about 65, 75. Either way, it's a lot of cases. I think what we need to emphasize, though, is that our ability to work with your group and the LAPD is important, because you are walking into very dangerous situations. Many of the apartments are gang-infested. Many of them are havens for drug dealing, and they are holding our communities hostage. And you are one of the few, could say, recoursees or remedies that can change their whole life with your presence, and for that, I thank you. It is something that needs to be amplified. It's something that we need to bring to light, and the role you play along with the LAPD in cleaning up our neighborhoods, it's profound. So, for that, I thank you for taking that risk, for sticking up to the plate, and for you councilmembers for bringing this to light. Thank you so much.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and to the inspectors. I know the mayor has a term called teamwork LA. Well, the building inspectors are certainly part of that great team, because what Ed just spoke at his district, in Eric's district, in parts of Wendy's district, but I saw no in Nate's district and my district, the core of Wilshire, from Wilton Place, by Beverly Boulevard, by Olympic Boulevard, by the Harbor Freeway, is the most densely populated area outside of Manhattan and New York City. And those buildings are extremely important, as Andrew Adelman, our great general manager, is here from Building and Safety, but they're extremely important. I know Eric, who's a champion for the Housing Trust Fund and all that work that's so important. The existing stock is extremely important. We talk about the area of Temple Bowery, and I remember there were homes on there, 100-year-old apartment buildings that fell off their foundations. And I think we went out together on one of those on Diamond Street years ago. And I just know we have to enforce the law, protect those buildings, protect the people who live in the buildings, and make sure they're safe for so, so many people who live there and have their homes there. So, I wanted to thank you for the extra effort and know that there's a lot of work out there, but the work you do really makes a difference. And I think the whole movement for your inspection came out of that effort, so I want to salute you and thank Councilmembers Gruel and Garcetti for being champions of this effort. Thank you.
I'd like to present to Keith Gordon, Senior Inspector, a proclamation thanking for his work.
And for the entire Los Angeles Housing Department, we have a resolution for the Code Enforcement Division, and ask the three other gentlemen to step forward. And on behalf of myself, Councilmember Gruel, and the entire city, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. For our next presentation, the chair recognizes Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, and I'm joined by members that assist our Code Enforcement every day, members of the Los Angeles Police Department, and they're joining me. And I'm recognizing some of our fine members of the Los Angeles Police Department's West Valley Division this morning on an incident that occurred in the district. And as we know, Code Enforcement does their activities at the apartments, and LAPD does their activities throughout the city to give us a safe city. And to give you a brief description of what occurred, on November 25th at 3:00 a.m., we had LAPD officers, detectives, that were deployed looking for burglars along Ventura Boulevard into West Valley, and they were working an assignment from midnight to 7:00 a.m. While on a stakeout in that area, in the vicinity of Ventura and Resita Boulevard, they witnessed three individuals standing at the rear of a white Mercedes-Benz with the trunk open. Not many people on the street at 3:00 a.m. in that area. The detectives, the officers, observed the individuals proceed to the front of a local business and stayed there for a few minutes, and then got back in their car and fled the scene. Believing that the suspects may have committed a burglary or some other crime, the officers initiated a traffic stop. The individuals in the vehicle consented to a vehicular search. Officer Mays recovered from inside the vehicle spray paint cans, markers, a notebook with tagging inside, and bottles of malt liquor beer. The suspects, all under the age of 21, had paint on their hands and in their hair. Additionally, a scribe was found in the pocket of the driver in his pants pocket. The officers found the same monikers that were inside the notebook painted on Ventura Boulevard businesses. They also noticed etching on the window where the individuals had their vehicle parked. They were all arrested for felony vandalism. Two of the individuals had been previously arrested in San Diego for similar charges and were currently on probation. And I want to acknowledge what these individuals did, the members of the Los Angeles Police Department, in trying to rid our community of graffiti and tagging and window etching, which is causing great destruction to public property, causing thousands and thousands of dollars in damage to our businesses within the City of Los Angeles. So, while they were looking for burglars, they end up making felony arrests for the individuals who were destroying businesses and the community within the San Fernando Valley. And I have with me this morning their captain, Captain Jim Cansler, who leads the West Valley Division, who's a fine representative of the LAPD. Captain Cansler? And every time we acknowledge an officer from West Valley, the captain finds the time to come down and support his troops, and I want to mention that. We have Sergeant Stephen Maron, Sergeant, Los Angeles Police Department. We have a certificate of commendation for you, Sergeant Maron, who's got how many children on the department? He's got two children who are members of the Los Angeles Police Department, a family We have Officer Christian Mays. It's okay, I can spin around both ways there. We have Gregory Crowe, Detective Gregory Crowe. And Officer John Dunlop. I'm going to let one of the individuals say a couple comments, and whoever speaks, speak quickly.
Before we hear from them, the chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
I'm Sergeant Maron from West Valley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to join Mr. Zine in those, those words of recognition for all these fine officers. And I just want to particularly say on a personal level, my office and I work closely with Captain Cansler. We really appreciate everything you do for the Valley and the city. You are a fine, fine man and a terrific example of everything that is the best about the LAPD. Congratulations to you, sir.
I'm Sergeant Maron from West Valley Detectives. First of all, I would like to thank Captain Cansler. A year and a half ago, he had the foresight to stand up and put our unit in place. To this date, this year-to-date, we've put 130 career criminals in jail, and these are people that are victimizing the citizens that live in the West Valley area. And I also would like to thank Councilmember Zine for bringing us down here and thanking us for what we did. And most of all, I would like to thank the folks that work for me, because they're the ones that really do the work and make this unit look really well. And thank you for having us.
Thank you, and we will definitely keep up the good work with the fine members of the West Valley LAPD. And you are getting a brand-new police station, by the way, as you all know. That's why you're currently living in trailers. All right, thank you. I have one more presentation, Mr. President. Can Sergeant George Max Gomez and his corps please join me up here? Aren't you folks with? Come on up. Come on up. This is a unique situation that occurred, and the reason I've got flags is there's a symbol to this flag, as we all know. If you could pass these out to each of you. I think we have enough for everyone. Hey, Bill, come on up here. Bill Davis, who's the, the man who brought this all about. Sergeant Max Gomez. George Max Gomez came from very humble beginnings, second-generation Mexican-American. He grew up... He grew up under privilege on the streets of Los Angeles, where he is subjected to gangs, drugs, crimes. However, he took the good road. George attended, graduated from Birmingham High School in Lake Balboa. He joined the California Army National Guard during his senior year at Birmingham. And Sergeant Gomez was shipped to Afghanistan in March 2002 as a fighting member of the Third Special Forces Group Operational Detachment Alpha 361, and distinguished himself during the War on Terror by being awarded a meritorious Bronze Star for actions in the field under combat. And during his deployment, Sergeant Gomez was promoted to sergeant. Sergeant Gomez, while he was in Afghanistan, and he had rearing from Sergeant Davis here, Staff Sergeant, Master Sergeant, Staff Sergeant, Staff Sergeant, I'm just retired sergeant, regarding flags, the American flag being given to the good folks in Afghanistan. So we arranged through my office to have 500 flags procured and shipped through the efforts of Sergeant Davis to Sergeant Gomez, and the American flags were then distributed to people in Afghanistan. And I made a commitment that when George returned back to the land of opportunity and freedom and prosperity, we would bring him down to City Council and acknowledge him for the sacrifices he's made on behalf of the American people. So it's with great honor that we have a resolution for Sergeant George Max Gomez for what he has done for our city, for our state, for our country, for the people of America, and thanking him for the courage in which you've gone through in the military service and for taking the right road instead of the wrong road. And also to acknowledge Sergeant Davis, who leads a corps of young men within the San Fernando Valley, get them on the right track, and they use our facilities at the West Valley Municipal Building where they do their training. So George, this is for you, on behalf of me and my colleagues here in the City Hall, for what you have done for the American people, and those with you this morning hopefully can follow in your footsteps as leaders to make sure we have the freedoms that we all take for granted here in America every single day. George, I'm going to have you say a few words, and then Sergeant Davis, you. There you go.
Well, sir, I also have something for you. I have brought to you a memorandum from the Third Special Forces Group, memorandum of authenticity for this American flag that I bear for you. On behalf of Operational Detachment Alpha 361, we present this United States flag to Los Angeles Councilman Dennis Zine in recognition and appreciation of his strong support of our mission in the War on Terror in Afghanistan. This flag was flown from 01 August 02 through 15 September of 2000 over Special Forces Firebase Tyche in the Providence of De Roud, Afghanistan. The firebase was named in honor of Sergeant First Class Peter B. Tyche, who was killed in action 12 June 2002 during Operation Enduring Freedom while a member of C Company, Second Battalion, Third Special Forces Group. The support of Councilman Zine through the organization and donation of over 500 small American flags to our team permitted us to achieve our mission objectives through the winning of hearts and minds of the indigenous Afghani people in our area of operation. Signed, Sergeant Gomez, Senior Weapon Sergeant, ODA 361.
Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, thank you very much for this, and Councilmember Zine, I truly do appreciate this. George and I have been acquainted ever since his real father was murdered, who was an Interpol agent assigned to Mexico City. George is now my son, no matter what happens, he's mine. I am extremely proud of him, and I'm proud of the city of Los Angeles for recognizing him today. He's risked his life for all of us, as many of us have here. Now, I'm going to contradict Councilman Zine. I am not the head of this Explorer post. Captain Terry Lee, who is behind me somewhere, who is a two-tour Vietnam Special Forces person, knows everything there is to know about the military. We affectionately refer to him as Yoda. He knows it all. And behind me again is Sergeant Matthew Anderson, who is Special Forces from the Desert Storm Conflict. Sergeant Anderson? So I'd like to present three generations of Green Berets here for your enjoyment. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Is Mr. Labonte still in chambers? Okay, I believe he had one more presentation, but if he's not currently in chambers, let's proceed to the following. For our next presentation, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Weiss.
Oh, is Ed, Ed, come on up. Mr. Reyes and I are up here because this is really something. We're here to recognize the Department of, our Department of Recreation and Parks entry in a Tournament of Roses Parade, the eight WOW riders. WOW stands for Wonderful Outdoor World, who are going to ride pack horses from the High Sierras in the Rose Parade. These are the riders. Let's hear it for the riders. These guys behind me are, and you may believe this, they are the youngest equestrians ever to have been permitted to ride in the Rose Parade. And they were chosen for this team based upon their outstanding performance over the summer on a High Sierra pack trip, something I know I couldn't do. I'm really proud of you guys for doing it. I'm sure Mr. Reyes could do it. And what's really impressive about this is this is a program run by our Department of Recreation and Parks that's designed to introduce inner-city kids to the joys, the wonders, the rigors of the outdoor world, of roughing it, and the fact that the city of Los Angeles Recreation and Parks Department has an entry, and that you guys, I think I told you earlier that a billion people were going to watch you on TV, I learned it's only like about 900 million, so you don't have to be that nervous. It's going to be, and everybody who watches you guys in this parade is going to have a smile from ear to ear. They're all going to be so proud of you guys, and I'll bet you when you're riding in that parade, your smiles are going to be even larger. So you guys have a great time. It's January 1st, everybody remember that? And we are so proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank Councilmember Weiss, Mr. Molineto, the Director of Recreation and Parks, and the staff for making sure we have this type of access for our young people. As we saw earlier today, there's a tradition of horses. There's a lot more to it than just horses. There's a history. I'm sure they'll get a chance to learn about our cultures and how we evolved as a city, and the horse was a big, big factor in our growing up as a city. So congratulations to you. Have fun, and don't worry about the millions of people, just enjoy the moment.
On behalf of the group and the program, we're going to have our terrific Director of Recreation and Parks, Manuel Molineto, come up and say a few words. Come on up.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I'd just like to say that the WOW Program, Wild Wonderful World, is a partnership with Disney. And the program, what it allows us to do is teach youngsters at the rec centers about what exists in this wonderful world outside of the city. We teach kids how to camp at the rec center, we teach them how to cook, we teach them about nature, and then we take them out into nature, up into the High Sierras, so they can really practice their craft. I must say, I had an opportunity last week to ride with these young people. They're excellent equestrians, they even gave me some pointers on riding, so I would ask that all of you stay tuned on New Year's Day and watch the Rose Parade, because this is going to be the Los Angeles City Recreation and Parks entry into the Rose Parade. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations, Josh. Congratulations. Congratulations to you guys. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job, everybody. We have certificates for all of you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations, guys. We're now going to start, colleagues, the annual presentation of Music Week in the chambers, where each of us has the opportunity to recognize significant achievements and accomplishments in the community, in the field of music, in the communities that we represent. It's an annual event that was founded by Margie Evans, and we're all going to go in a, we'll go in a circle here, or a half-circle, and give everybody the opportunity to recognize their honorees. I'd first like to ask Ernest Leitner, if you could come on up. You're here representing Arthur Hamilton. Arthur Hamilton was a composer and lyricist of many timeless standards such as Crimea River and The Best I Ever Was. He's written songs in collaboration with other composers such as Dave Gruson and Joe Harnell, and he's a tenured member, was a tenured member of the boards of ASCAP and AMPUS. And in his honor, in fact, I donated $500 from my office account to purchase a piano at Hamilton High, where they really focus on music and the arts. And it's about, this is a fitting honor for him, but perhaps the piano is even more fitting. And so I'd like to ask you, Mr. Leitner, to accept this on behalf of Mr. Hamilton and tell us maybe just a few words about him and why he's so special.
He's a very special person, and we worked together in the, on the board of directors of the Beam Foundation, which you probably will hear a little bit more about later on. Arthur regrets not being able to be here. If he were here, he would be very proud, very appreciative, very eloquent. I can sum it up, though, in two words, thank you.
Thank you very much. Please give him the congratulations of this council. Thank you. Colleagues, before we go around in order, I'd like to make a presentation on behalf of Council District Eight in honor of Marshall and Wilma Coleman. And I saw, here she is, terrific. Marshall and Wilma Coleman are natives of New Orleans, Louisiana, and after retiring from 30 years of teaching in our public schools, you operated a private dance school, a boutique, and a beauty salon, and you have been active in so many community organizations. And what you're well-known for is the Regency West Facility in Lemerick Park Village, which is a facility that's well-known throughout Los Angeles, and we're very proud of what you've done there. You've produced a variety of plays, including Louie and Ophelia, Black Woman's Blues, The Dyna Washington Story, and Ain't Misbehavin'. And I know from my friend Mark Ridley Thomas, who would be here today if the community hadn't done a great thing for him and recognized him in a way he deserved by electing him to the State Assembly, I know from him how proud he and everybody else in the Eighth Council District are of you and everything you've achieved for the community. You are a true shining star there. You're an extraordinary example to the community, and you keep giving back and giving back and giving back. And for that and for all those efforts, the City Council of the City of Los Angeles wants to recognize you this week as the recipient of the Music Week Award for Council District Eight. Congratulations. And I'd like you to, and if you could just say a few words, we'd really love to hear from you.
I would like to thank Margie Evans for all her efforts put forth for this Music Week. We all appreciate what you've done, Margie, and to the Councilman, this is really an honor. We hope to continue this and make it greater and bigger each year. Thank you so much.
And we're going to ask Margie to stand up here so we can embarrass her just a little bit while we go out throughout this program. And I'd like to, if it's possible, colleagues, we'll just go in order. Council District Six, Ms. Glanter, are you, are you ready? Ms. Glanter? Would you like to?
I would.
Terrific, and we'll just go around the room. And if I could just ask everybody if we could just all come around in order so that we're all ready to go, and you'll know when you're on deck and when you're batting cleanup. Thank you, Ms. Glanter.
Thank you. Thank you. First, I'm appearing here first as Mr. Burnson, who couldn't be with us this morning, and so I'd like to ask Raymond Cho to join me at.
Conductor Raymond Cho.
Conductor Raymond Cho, and the Nobel Middle School, who are both receiving.
I'll take that one in tomorrow.
All right. There you are.
Okay.
And do we have Conductor Raymond Cho here?
He's not here.
All right, well, so he's not here, Mr. Burnson's not here, and maybe they're off somewhere together.
That's probably where they are.
We do want to commend them in any case. Now, switching hats, although I didn't bring a hat, now I'm me, and I'd like to invite the, oh, here's, I was with that, all right, sorry. I'd like to invite Richard Allen.
This is Richard Allen?
Oh, okay.
Richard Allen is here.
There you are.
Hi.
How are you? Congratulations. Mr. Allen is a retired commanding officer of the Naval Reserve Group aboard the USS Independence. I bet you're glad to be retired.
Yes, sir.
He's been the pianist for the University Christian Church for over 30 years, and has taught piano to Los Angeles students and adults for many, many years, and he's also a former English teacher. So for all of those things, even though we're only here for your music, for all of those things, I would like to thank you and congratulate you and wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
We are very proud to have you as a resident of the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations. Did you want to say something?
Thank you very much. When I first moved here, just out of the Navy in 1966, everybody I met was from somewhere. I was from Illinois. The only person I ever met who was actually born here was the lady I finally married, my wife Lynn.
Is she here?
No, she's not here. She was here yesterday. But I think today, people are proud to say I'm from Los Angeles, and I think that's the way it should be. I certainly am. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to honor, I think he is incoming, but I will nevertheless honor Bill Tapi Tapia, who is a great Hawaiian jazz ukulele musician, and maybe the most senior musician we honor today. He was born on New Year's Day 1908, learned the ukulele at seven years old, and he was playing USO shows in World War I. So this is somebody who has, from Hawaii for years, been renowned as one of the finest ukulele players in the world. He moved here four years ago, I believe, to be with his children and grandchildren here to Los Angeles, and that is really to our benefit. He was known for pioneering a style of ukulele playing behind his head. So long before Jimi Hendrix, we had Tapi out there doing it with his ukulele. And we also, I think he played with, was it Noble Band? Yeah. He played with Johnny Noble's band at the grand opening of the Royal Hawaiian Hotel, and somebody whose music has not only entertained troops who came through Wahoo when he was 10 years old, I think he played to his first group of men and women in uniform, but who has delighted audiences for years and decades, literally since that, a living testament that you, once a musician, always a musician, and you never stop playing. So please give him in absentia right now a round of applause. So long before Jimi Hendrix, we had Tapi out there doing it with his ukulele. And we also... I think he played with... was it Noble Band? Yeah. He played with Johnny Noble's band at the grand opening of the Royal Hawaiian Hotel. And somebody whose music has not only entertained troops, who came through Wahoo when he was 10 years old, I think he played to his first group of men and women in uniform, but who has delighted audiences for years and decades, literally since that, a living testament that you, once a musician, always a musician, and you never stop playing. So please give him, in absentia right now, a round of applause. And I'll give that to him. And I would also like to invite LaConte Middle School. Maybe you want to join me for this one?
Your school will be honored on tomorrow.
Okay, and I'm going to wait that, but they're also going to be honored tomorrow for the great music programs that they do, and it's so important that we're working in those middle schools as well. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm glad to be up here as well. I had the pleasure of representing all of you in the City Council at the press conference that we had acknowledging Music Week. And particularly want to acknowledge Margie Evans, who has really been the passionate leader of this effort, and I just want to say a special thank you. If you have not had the chance to meet her and work with her, she is really dynamite, and we should be so lucky to have her and continue in this effort. I would like to present, and we just have a representative today from the Supreme Master at Shanghai, who is a renowned humanitarian artist and spiritual visionary. Over the past decade, she has tirelessly traveled the world using the proceeds of her artistic creation to help those in need. So I'm pleased to have representatives from the Supreme Master here today to accept this on her behalf, and want to please, if you would, share with her how proud we are and thank her for all of her efforts.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And also want to mention Mount Gleason School, which is also one of those that's going to be acknowledged tomorrow, and we'll provide them with a proclamation as well. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The Old Gazer. Well, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I am honored today, along with my colleagues, to be a part of LA Music Week presentation. And it's my pleasure to honor one of the recipients, who's not here, but I still want to honor Ed the Gazer Archer. The Gazer, always a lover of the blues. Ed has lived in Los Angeles since 1951 and became a large collector of records and memorabilia from the blues world in the '70s. In the early '80s, Ed the Gazer joined the Southern California Blues Society, and after his retirement from machining in 1987, he became a co-host of the blues show Preaching the Blues on KPFK 90.7 with Mary Catherine Alden. Later, he became both producer and host of that show. Just last year, Ed the Gazer became the first president of the infant organization, the California Blues Preservation Society. Ed, thank you for your commitment to this fine genre of music. I love the blues, and I think we need to keep it alive. And with people like... Let's hear it for the blues. Thank you for your commitment, and with people like you as its champion, I'm confident that the blues will continue to live on. Keep up the good work, Ed, and keep on preaching the blues.
That's beautiful. Thank you.
Tell him I love him.
Thank you.
Hi, Councilman Holden. The birth of Los Angeles Music Week is here. Thank you so much.
Thank you for all you do for us. And once again, and for the past nine years, we are going to welcome Margie Evans, along with many special people we are honoring here today at the Ninth Annual Music Week Festival. And I'm sure you've given her a hand already, but let's give her another one.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
She's a remarkable individual who worked very hard each year to bring this wonderful program of enlightenment to our children, young people, and all Angelenos. One of the many highlights of Music Week is the opportunity to recognize individuals from the 10th District who have made significant contribution in the music field. Our first honoree is a music educator and founder of the Beam Foundation for the Advancement of Music. Beam stands for Black Experience as Expressed Through Music. The foundation researches the social, psychological, and historical aspect of African-American music and musicians. Our honoree has been a pioneer in music education for more than 50 years and is the author of Central Avenue: Its Rise and Fall. The book explains the influence of Central Avenue in the 9th District and the development of the black culture and music on a national and local level during the mid-1900s. Please give a warm round of applause to our first honoree from the 10th District, Miss Betty Yarborough Cox. Did I say 50 years?
You must have been 30, didn't you? Thank you so much. I want to thank Councilman Holden and City Council for this wonderful certificate of commendation. I'm very proud of it. But I especially want to thank Margie Evans for the many weeks, months, and years that she's put into making this LA Music Week a success, and she's just done a wonderful job, and I think we all appreciate her and to thank her very much. I feel humbled as well as grateful for this honor. Thank you so much.
Okay, and for our second tribute is given to posthumously for a man who has been referred to as the dean of African-American composers, William Grant Steele. In 1930, he was the first African-American to compose works of music played by major American orchestras and to conduct symphonies. He was the first African-American composer to orchestrate the popular Broadway dance number, "The Charleston." He was a pioneer in using unusual instruments such as the vibraphone and the railroad hammer in his work, like a jackhammer. And he was the first African-American to have an opera bayou legend performed on television in 1981. William Grant Steele was born in Mississippi in 1895. His parents were teachers. His stepfather influenced his love of music and literature. Steele dropped out of college in 1916 to arrange music for William C. Handy. In the 1920s, he settled in New York and played for musical productions. He also began to study composition and went on to become an America's music legend. Mr. Steele was a resident of the 10th District for many years before his passing in 1978, at the age of 83. Today, we honor to have... To honor him, and I'd like to present this certificate to his daughter. I might add that William Grant Steele Arts Center will live on in his memory, and it is in the 10th District. And many people come there each year, each day, in fact, to look at the artwork and to see the works of Dr. Steele. And you accepted it for his daughter, and your name is?
Bobby Campbell.
Miss Campbell? Yes, how are you doing, Miss Campbell?
One of the William Grant Steele. Yes. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of council, fortunately, this very special person could not be here this morning, but I will recite his magic words: "Earth angel, earth angel, will you be mine? I'm just a fool, a fool in love with you." Cleve Duncan and the Penguins. How could I make that mistake? Cleve, name. Cleve, forgive me, I got slow there when I wanted to say "earth angel," and everybody knows it's one of the absolute anthems of rock and roll. And "earth angel," and anybody who's out riding safely down any road tonight, turn on K-Earth 101, and I'm sure you'll hear "earth angel." So I want to salute Cleve Duncan and the Penguins. "Earth angel, earth angel, will you be mine? My darling dear, I'll love you all the time. I'm just a fool, a fool in love with all of you." Thank you very much. And that's on behalf of Jan Perry, we salute, because music makes the world go round. And it's music, wherever it is throughout the world, somewhere, they're listening to "earth angel," and we are the city of the angels. And out of that comes the Do Wop Society, because there's nothing better than Do Wop. I know I love Elvis Presley, but Do Wop is really something that is so soulful. And when you think of the kids on the streets in Philadelphia in the '50s, and Dick Clark and American Bandstand and all of that generation of explosion of music, and it's music... Come on up here now.
Okay, I'm here.
It's music that brought the world together, and it's music that helped the races.
That's true.
And as you could say, the other day, we had a beautiful thing with Congressman Becerra named the Oakwood Station in my council district after the Cole Station. Nat King Cole Station. And I said to his family, I said, "It was Chuck Berry that integrated the races of rock and roll of young people," but it was Nat King Cole that introduced it and helped all people of all ages, love music and love people. So with that in mind, we want to salute the Do Wop Society for their work on Music Week, and it should not just be Music Week, but music should be part of our lives every day. Amen. Let's hear it for Earth Angel, the real Earth Angel. And also, as we talk about music, we have Youth First, Artists in Residence Program, which is a theater of the hearts, a theater program, and Jan Perry asked me to salute at this time all of those who are here today. And we kept you waiting so much, but it wasn't bad, was it? We talked about music. Sheila Scott Wilkinson is here with me today. Give her a big hand. She's been a champion of so many people. On behalf of Jan Perry, this recognition for your theater, The Hearts Youth First, is an Artists in Residence Program, along as we salute Music Week, efforts to prevent and intervene youth to improve their quality of life and the work that they do in helping young people engage. It's all about engagement. Sing the music. Don't throw the stones. Salute each other. Youth First, Artists in Residence, on behalf of councilmember Jan Perry. Sheila, give me your hand there. All right, give me a good hand. All righty. Good job.
On behalf of Theater of Hearts, our Board of Directors, the many thousands of youngsters that we serve countywide, and all of the artists, we have a roster of over 300 professional master artists who work very hard with the youngsters all over the county in schools doing music, theater, visual arts, poetry, dance. It's multi-multi-cultural as well. And I just wanted to show you, in light of everything that's happening in the city, the youngsters really need to express themselves through the arts. It's a positive way for them to move forward. This piece here was done by a young man, a young man who is three years old, not three years old, third grade. And I just want to applaud all these kids for their wonderful, wonderful way in which they use the arts. So thank you again for all the artists, Jan Perry, Councilmen Tom Labange, and all of you. Thank you again for pushing arts education forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Music and the arts, it doesn't get better. We're going to go back and take a picture right here.
No, I will not finish the "Earth Angel" song. But I wanted to acknowledge Franklin High School, and just for all our Franklin High School participants, read to them, "On the honor bestowed upon you by the Los Angeles Music Week, through your profound inspiration, creative expression, extraordinary musical talent, you have helped to enhance the beauty of our culture and enrich the lives of those in our community and the City of Los Angeles. Thank you, Franklin, for your great work."
And I'll give it to Franklin. You want to meld it with him?
Yeah, we'll hear it.
You'll give it to him. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Zine.
Julia Wu? It's your turn. As we go around the horseshoe, it's your turn to be recognized. Los Angeles Music Week, instrument of unity, and that's what it's about. The epitome of dedication and diligence, that's you. Served as trustee emeritus for the Los Angeles Community Colleges, in addition to being both the chairman, I should say the chairwoman, or the chairperson, and founder of the Performing Arts Foundation for Asian-Americans. We want to congratulate you on the honor bestowed upon you by the Los Angeles Music Week. Through your profound inspiration, creative expression, and extraordinary music talent, you have helped to enhance the beauty of our culture and enrich our lives of those in our community and in the City of Los Angeles. Now, I'm not going to sing the end of "Earth Angel," but I'm going to give you the microphone so you can sing the end of "Earth Angel." There you go.
Thank you very much, Councilman Zine. I must say, I'm very... I'm extremely thrilled to have this opportunity to be honored by the LA Music Week, because during my span of my life, I have been honored by the education community. I've been honored as a library trustee, and I've been honored by... as a community college trustee. But this is the first time that I've been honored for my support and advocacy for the music community. That gives me a real pleasure to be here, and I feel very thankful to the founder of LA Music Week, Margie Evans. Would it not be for her efforts, we wouldn't have LA Music Week here. Of course, the council and the city mayor all have greatly support to LA Music Week. And I think music and arts are the soul and the heart of human culture and humanization, civilization. And we have to recognize music and arts. And this is a great time. I think LA City is very fortunate to have somebody, to have such a great group of supporters to promote music. So again, thank you very much for this honor, and I hope this Music Week will go on and on for the next century.
And the beat goes on. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Weiss is going to do two more presentations for the council president and myself.
Is Harry the Bear here? You're... Oh, come on up, sir. Come on up, sir. I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
On behalf of Council President Padilla from the 7th District, we're here to do a presentation in honor of your father, Harry the Bear.
Babason.
Babason. He was born in Dallas and was one of jazz's great bass players and one of its unfortunately forgotten pioneers, because that happens in that business. He was the first jazz artist to do his... to solo on the cello, something that's well-known today but wasn't commonly done back then, and was a noted contributor to an album known as "Resilience," which you're going to have to tell us about, additional to playing with a veritable who's who of well-known performers, which is chronicled in the histories and the annals of the Great Age of Jazz. He, in 1952, he booked many top-name artists in a suburban LA club known as Trade Winds, and so this honor is long overdue. And to his son, I'd like to present this certificate and ask you to say a few words about your dad. Congratulations. Well earned. Thank you.
Thank you to Margie Evans and the council. This is indeed a great honor. I'm sad that my dad's not here to accept this. Emphysema took him back in 1988, but not many people heard of Harry Babason, but they certainly heard of the people he played with. He recorded with Louis Armstrong, and Charlie Parker, and Chet Baker, and Gene Krupa, and Boyd Rayburn, and Benny Goodman, and you just keep on naming the names. He was on over 1,500 recordings through his amazing career. To make his music and his memory live on, I'm in the process of building a jazz museum called JazzinHollywood.com. You can find it on the internet. It's, it will basically be dedicated to all the great West Coast jazz players. West Coast getting slighted so many times in history. Even Ken Burns' jazz documentary, although interviewing the great Jimmy Rolls many times, didn't actually mention that he played piano and played it beautifully. And he's actually on two dozen of the recordings that we own. So anyway, on behalf of my father, I gratefully accept this award. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for coming. And now, one final presentation on behalf of council member Ms. Akowski, who is in the chair. I don't know if Doris Fisher or Representative...
She was there yesterday. She's 96, I'm guessing.
Well, Doris Fisher is 96. And she wrote her first chart-topping hit, Ms. Akowski told me, in 1938, followed later on by some other hits in 1940. Sounds like she had an extraordinary career in the 30s and 40s. Worked with everybody, Billie Holiday, Ella Fitzgerald, the Mills Brothers, Spike Jones, on and on and on. Leonard Feather called her out for special recognition. We're very proud that she is the closeout presentation of Music Week. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, everybody who participated.
We forgot one. Dr. Rachel Eubanks, she had her certificate. District Number 7 had her certificate.
District 7 evidently had the president, had the certificate for Dr. Eubanks. We'll make sure you get that, that certificate, because you wouldn't have been picked if you weren't just as deserving as everybody else we've heard from today. Thank you for everything you've done for music, for the community, for the folks who live and work and, and go to school in District 7. We greatly appreciate your service, greatly appreciate your being here today and your certificate. We'll get that for you right away, ma'am. Congratulations to you, and congratulations to everybody else who participated in Music Week. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Thank you, Margie, for another great performance, and to all our awardees today. Madam Clerk, I think that concludes the presentations, and we can go back to the items that were called special. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Zine.
Another presentation. I just have been asked to introduce, from the Fujian Province of China, a planning delegation that's here, elected officials, architects, and engineers. If you'll please stand to be acknowledged by our city council. These people are from Fujian Province, from China, here touring the city of Los Angeles on planning issues. We thank you for joining us in council day. Madam Chair, thank you. Shea, Shea, Shea. Shea, Shea, Shea. Is that the end of that song? Oh, just Shea, Shea, okay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Next item, Madam President, item number one was called special for a card from the public, and there is also an amending motion 1A that has been distributed to the council members.
Mr. Weiss would like to speak. Did you want to speak before we hear from the card? We have two...
Public hearing was held in committee, and so I'd like to have my opportunity to address the matter.
All right, so there is no motion for a public hearing? Is this required, public hearing, Madam City Attorney?
No.
Public hearing was already heard in...
All right, then let me recognize Mr. Weiss for the special motion.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And an amending motion has been circulated and has been very graciously seconded by the Chair of our Planning and Land Use Management Committee, Mr. Reyes. And I need to tell all of you, this is the end of a long process involving a a long and difficult and controversial development project on the West Side. And, yeah, if we could have some...
If we could have quiet, we are now dealing with items on the agenda that people are here to listen to and help resolve.
Thank you, Madam President. I really want to extend my very personal thank you to Mr. Reyes, to Ms. Gruel, and also to Mr. Burnson for their careful consideration and careful reconsideration of this matter and all the equities and all the complexities that are involved in it. Because it was a complex matter. And I really appreciate the spirit of friendship in which we all cooperated and collaborated over the past several days, culminating in the amendment that's offered before all of you. I also want to commend our planning staff, who worked very hard with my terrific planning deputy Renee Scalachi. Thank you, Renee. Thank you very much. That's really kind of you. Thank you. And also applicants, council, Mr. Armbruster, for really rolling up his sleeves in the past several days to ensure that we had an agreement at the end of the day. And I'll tell you, this is a very difficult development issue. At its core, it was about height. Some neighbors wanted a building higher. A very important institution, the Westwood Presbyterian Church, wanted a building that was higher. Some neighbors wanted a building that was lower. And all of these interests collided in this process. And they all shared their, the same concerns about traffic growth and quality of life. All of these concerns were presented to the West Side Area Planning Commission. I made a recommendation to the Area Planning Commission that recommendation is a lower building than the building they ultimately approved. But I really do respect the work they put in here and the diligence with which they considered the matter, and the thoroughness with which they considered it. And so, like many of the people in this process, I too reconsidered my, my position after... Can we have order in the chamber, Miss, Madam President?
Again, can we have quiet in the chamber?
I, I too thought that was appropriate to always be willing to listen to additional views and additional opinions. And so, at, at the Plum Committee, and, and it's a long story, we won't go into it now, an additional amount of height was added to this building, but we've subsequently had very constructive conversations with everybody involved in this process. And everybody concluded and understood at the end of the day why that was an inappropriate decision for this council to make. And in the spirit of the utmost graciousness, my colleagues on that committee are joining me in offering the amendment today so that no additional height will be tacked onto that building by this council, which is a true victory for the community. Along with all of the community mitigations and programs that are entailed and included in the, the agreement that goes along with this project, the community's concerns will be addressed. And so, I'm very proud of everybody who participated in this process in a spirit of partnership. It was a very difficult process, a very contentious and controversial process. But when you approach these matters in the spirit of partnership, and you're willing to listen to the other side, and you're willing to modify your own views when you hear the views of others, at the end of the day, not everybody gets everything they want. But a victory is attained on most points for most people. And I think credit is due to all those who engaged in that partnering process. Especially you, Mr. Reyes. Thank you very, very much. And I asked my colleagues to approve the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. The Chair would call on Mr. Councilmember Reyes as well. But the city attorney has advised us that since the amendment did not come from Plum, it is a change, that it needs to have a limited public hearing. So, Mr. Reyes, do you want to, we had two cards submitted. Shall we hear that? All right, then let us call on these two members of the public, Richard Agay and Basil Papa George as well. And please come forward and briefly address this issue. Mr. Agay?
Thank you. Madam President, council members. Well, I, I think that the decision is made. Let me just point out, so that there's no waiver, this project does not qualify for increased height. It is over 75 feet wide and does not satisfy the shadow requirements. I know it's highly technical, but just in case it has to be repeated here, it has been repeated here. And the legal basis for objecting to this project has not been waived.
Mr. Papa George, would you like to speak? No.
In the back, Madam President, if you could give him a moment to come forward. Thank you.
It's all right. I, I tried to be brief. I want to make reference to the two communications that I emailed to each of the council members. I'm sorry that this decision has already been made because in those communications, I asked the two committees to look at the road map where the board of the council has to have to deal with this down there. That's the Superior Court decision called for the EIR before any further action of the city, including this body, which is specifically named in the, in the court decision. Decision was not fully executed because of a disagreement between the parties which brought about that court decision. That does not however nullify that decision. It appears to me that the council should at least consider the court's opinion and judge without further action until the environmental impact report is, is complied with. If you are going to totally disrupt the community by this monstrosity of a problem, anything about said in the fact is out of bounds. However, if you are going to breach that, at least, at least dictate that the EIR be, be prepared so that the citizens will know that at least considerations have been fully exercised. I have to live on the street of Wilshire Boulevard. I have to use it to go to work to do my business and territory. Or do my car, do my wheelchair. The developer has already compromised my capability in that area. I wonder what other buildings called here will be breached on this much larger property.
All right, thank you, Mr. Papa George. We will ask Mr. Reyes and the committee to address the issues that you raised. All right, the Chair would like to close the public hearing at this time and ask, call on Councilmember Reyes.
Written statement from Mr. Papa George, so we'll be able to address the concerns he's raised. I just want to make one slight technical change on the motion. It points to November 17th as the date, actually, December 10th. I believe, I want to just thank Councilman Weiss for his diligence and again, the cooperation of the community. But I think he spoke eloquently in how hard we've been trying to reach some form of balance. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, we have before us the committee report and the amendment that was submitted by Mr. Weiss and seconded by Councilmember Reyes. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, over the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 10 ayes. That matter is approved. We will send it forthwith to the mayor. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, item number four was called special for Councilmember Labange.
Excuse me, Mr. Labange, would you object? I think Ms. Galanter had special one dealing with some need to assist tenants in a building that had burned. So if we could call... Oh, she has left. All right, well then go on. The vote goes to item four then.
Hi, thank you. Madam President, members of council, this is a very effective tool that I want to thank the Los Angeles Police Department in the Hollywood area. Want to thank the city attorney's office and their team to deal with the problem of street prostitution, not just in Hollywood, but throughout the city of Los Angeles, whether it's on Sepulveda, Washington Boulevard, Century Boulevard, Figueroa Street. This tool will send a message to those who come in and don't care about our neighborhoods, don't care about the people who live in the neighborhoods, show great disrespect. And it will be an effective tool to curb street prostitution in the city of Los Angeles. It's been challenged in the court, in the legal system by measures of Oakland and Stockton. And yesterday at the police academy, where there was a leadership luncheon, a officer from Oakland Police Department was there, and he told me personally how effective this tool is to combat street prostitution. And will be helpful for our city. I'd like to call on my time, the great captain of Hollywood area, Mike Downing, and also Sergeant Hamilton, and also one of the fine city attorneys, Asher Greenberg, to come to the front table if they would please and discuss this issue to inform the council how important this tool will be. If I could ask Captain Downing maybe to open up. And I also want to thank Sergeant Hamilton for his great work in researching this.
Thank you, Councilman Labange. Prostitution has been centuries old. And in the city, it's been something that's really deteriorated the quality of life in our communities. Some believe that it's a victimless crime, but the remnants of it, the exploitation of women and children, the spread of disease, the deterioration of neighborhoods, has contributed to a decrease in the quality of life in our communities. It's one of our primary complaints in Hollywood Division. I know it's plagued in, in South, it's a plague in South Central Los Angeles, in the Sepulveda Corridor in the Valley, and certainly in Hollywood Division. We make nearly 2,000 arrests a year for this. We've gone after the pimps, the panders, the prostitutes as a primary target. But the purpose and intent of this legislation is directed at the market, to go after the Johns, to seize and, and sell the vehicles of Johns so that we'll no longer have a demand for this activity and it'll leave the streets of Hollywood.
Yes, in August 2000, council requested that we draft an ordinance addressing vehicles involved in prostitution activity. In drafting this ordinance, we considered an existing vehicle code section and case law, as well as Oakland's experience in dealing with this type of problem. Oakland has been dealing with this, with prostitution activity and vehicle forfeiture as a way of addressing it since 1993. They enacted an ordinance in 1997, which was upheld by the courts. And this particular ordinance is based upon Oakland's ordinance. Essentially, the way it works is... Essentially, the way it works is that after the police do a trick task force, the vehicle is seized, notice is provided to the lien holder or the legal owner of the vehicle, a notice of intended forfeiture is provided by the city attorney. If the owner of the vehicle or the registered owner wishes to contest the claim...contest the forfeiture, they must file a claim with the city, and they're entitled to a hearing to be held in Superior Court to determine the claim. I'm available to answer questions.
Okay, before calling on the next speaker, I have on the queue Mr. Weiss, Mr. Barsetti, Mr. Zine, and Miss Hahn. Members of the council, we are down to a bare quarrel of 10 members. We do have at least two members who have commitments outside of this building within the next hour. We also have quite a few closed session items that have been previously continued at least once, if not two occasions. So, I'm asking for direction, for some direction here from the body, which we're going to plow through in the next half hour or so, or whether we're going to begin to roll items into next week, which will be our last week for the year, and agendas for next week already look long.
I would propose, Mr. President, that we plow through and have 20-second speeches.
Okay, so, members, I am asking for focus, I am asking for brevity, I am asking for a little bit of patience. Our next speaker is Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to Tom Labange. Mr. Labange, this was a great idea. It was frankly, long overdue in the neighborhood that you just began representing, not even a year ago, I don't think. A little, about a year or so ago, and you've been pushing this from day one. Congratulations to you. This is going to make a difference, not just in that neighborhood, but in a lot of neighborhoods around the city which are plagued by this problem. And what you've also done is you've, through your creativity and ingenuity, you've caused a spark, a spark to go off, to get people to think, well, if this is a useful tool in combating this sort of crime, well, let's look more broadly. Where else can we use it? And you know where we can use it? We can use it in the rising tide of gang violence in this city, where gang members, it's not just in parks, it's not just in street corners, it's in their cars, when they congregate in their cars, not just when they commit drive-bys, but when they drive through neighborhoods and do things which folks who have law enforcement expertise recognize as gang activity. You can recognize certain types of conduct and activity conducted by gang members in vehicles as gang activities. And so, we've directed the city attorney's office, along with the motion that we're passing today, we've directed the city attorney's office to present us with another ordinance, an ordinance that will cause gang members to have to lose their vehicles if they engage in gang activity in their vehicles. Let's take Mr. Labange's idea, let's see it, and let's raise it, and let's use this tool, nuisance abatement, taking vehicles to take another swipe at the gang problem in our city. Thank you, Mr. Labange, for being the catalyst for that important change. I want to thank the city attorney's office, Ms. Greenberg, because I can't wait to see that ordinance before our Public Safety Committee in 30 days, so we can pass another significant measure, another significant law, to take not just weapons, but cars away from gang members. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Barsetti.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, I'll be brief. Prostitution, bad. Tom Labange, great. This ordinance, very good. In particular, in Hollywood, CD 13, prostitution's been very bad, and people wake up and see the remnants of it the next morning. Thank you, Tom, for your leadership, and thank you for this great ordinance.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, 20 seconds or less. Captain Downing, I know that your leadership in Hollywood has really motivated the officers there. I worked Hollywood many years ago, and we tried this program and that program, Sergeant Hamilton, the frustration that you've gone through putting this all together, and you wonder, is there ever an end? And all the folks in Hollywood that want to split from the city, saying, we're not addressing the issues, the problems, the crime trend. Congratulations to Tom Labange. This will be a major hit, and with the publicity, we're going to receive a major effect on education to tell these people, if you're going to conduct this activity, don't do it in the city of Los Angeles, don't do it in Hollywood, don't do it in the San Fernando Valley, you're going to do it, do it out of this region. So, we're sending a very strong message. Congratulations to Tom, to the LAPD, Sergeant Hamilton, all the work you do at the city attorney's office. God bless y'all. Thank you very much.
Miss Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise to support Tom Labange's creativity and his pushing for this ordinance. I...I think this is an important way to curb prostitution, and I like this because sometimes I think our prostitution laws unfairly always target the woman. And so, this, to me, targets the real perpetrator, which is the John, and I think this is a good way to say, you know, we don't want this activity, and not only that, we're going to take your vehicle and impound it. And I think that is a great way to curb this activity. I also support recommendation three, which looks at the city attorney coming back and telling us how we can also possibly draft an ordinance that will impound vehicles that are used in gang-related crimes. I also think that's a way to finally show that we're serious about ridding our neighborhoods and our community of tough violence that we don't want to have happen here. So, thanks, Tom, for doing this. I think this is a good ordinance, and I support it.
Thank you, Miss Hahn. Are there members wishing to be heard? Close. Mr. Labange.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Members, thank you for the support, and I also want to thank also G.D. Kim from the city attorney's office, also Bill Consuela, who does a great job for the city attorney's office, their neighborhood prosecutors. I appreciate Michelle Fleanor, who's my deputy for the area, and my chief of staff, Kathy Jones-Irish, who worked hard on this, and all the neighborhood groups, the Spalding Square, the Chamber of Commerce, the Hollywood Hills West Community Neighborhood Council, a number of groups have worked on this throughout the years, who made an important role in getting us to this point. I thank you, members. If you come to Hollywood and disrespect the neighborhoods that you're there, the police department's going to take your wheels and put you on your heels. I call for an I-vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Seeing no other members wishing to be heard, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Labange, let's send this matter forthwith.
Mr. President, the ordinance will go over for second reading next week.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item number 16, called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine.
Item 16, Mr. President. There's a confusion on item 16, and I'd like to continue it because of the confusion.
God bless you.
Thank you. And I'd like to continue it for...let me tell you how long I want to continue it. A short period of time, Mr. President. How about two weeks, or thereabouts?
Members, request to continue this matter for two weeks. That would be after the first of the year. First council meeting is January 7th.
January 7th. We need a police department report on that particular issue, and we don't have one. So, that's why I request the clerk make sure the police department submit a report, so we can hear it when we come back. So, continue it until, what, January 7th?
January 7th. Is there any objection to the continuance of item number 16? Seeing none, so ordered. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there are two special motions not on the agenda. Do you wish to take those matters up now?
Let's take the special motions now.
The first one is special one, and it's presented by Councilmember Ruth Galanter, and the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
City Attorney.
On November 26, 2002, 10 different families, respective apartments in Van Nuys were destroyed by fire. Since that day, the city's housing department has determined that the tenant is eligible to receive calamity-based displaced tenant relocation assistance funds. Pursuant to both California Government Code and City Council Rule 23, council must first make a finding that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of the agenda for today's council meeting. If such a finding is made, the department requests that council authorize the disbursement of such funds.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Special one now before us. Members wishing to be heard on the motion itself? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on special one. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
And there's also a special two motion presented by Councilmember Garsetti, and that also has findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
The Los Angeles Housing Department has ordered rental housing units located at 3880 through 3892, West First Street, ordered vacated due to building code violations. The landlord has failed to provide tenant relocation assistance. Ordinance number 174477 makes provision for the city to advance relocation assistance directly to the tenants. The tenants are eligible for such assistance. Pursuant to both California Government Code and City Council Rule 23, council must first make a finding that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of the agenda for today's council meeting. If such a finding is made, the department requests that council authorize the disbursement of such funds.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings for special two. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Special two now before us. Members wishing to be heard on the motion itself? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on special two. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Special two is approved. Forthwith, please. Madam Clerk, do we still have pending item number two of the special meeting agenda?
Yes, you do, Mr. President.
Let us then temporarily recess the regular meeting agenda and return to the special meeting and take up item number two. We do have two-speaker cards on this item. Council calls for Mr. Marvin Seltzer, followed by Brendan Huffman. And you've heard our announcement before, your brevity would be very much appreciated.
Yes, I have. Mr. President and the council members, I'm here to support the motion presented by Councilmember Wendy Ruhl on the determination as a result of AB 63, in which letters were sent out and in effect scared the heck out of a lot of people who, in my opinion, had no idea that they were in violation of the law. As you probably know, AB 63 was initiated by the BTAC and finally passed by the state legislature a year ago for the handing of information of people who filed from the city of Los Angeles, so that the Office of Finance could do a search and find out who was not reporting their taxes or their fair share of taxes based on their gross revenue. In this current motion that has been out there, these people, in my opinion, and in BTAC's opinion, were number one, uninformed business people. They were not...they did not realize they were subject to grocery receipts tax. And there's a great deal of discrepancy as whether they felt they were independent contractors, employees, or just plain business people. Secondly, they came forward. A good portion of these people came forward after their first contact, which again, to me, is indicative that they were not aware that they were in violation. They did not know, and I cannot overemphasize that fact, that they were in violation of the current law. Most importantly, from BTAC's point of view, and hopefully from the city council and the economy of Southern California, particularly L.A., this effect is the effect of these types of penalties and interests are going to tremendously adverse to small business people who can ill afford either paying the tax or hiring competent personnel to represent them in trying to dispute it, if there is. And finally, I think the most important factor in all of this, because they did come forward, and because they did voluntarily come forward, they will be in conformity with the grocery receipts tax from here on in, which will, in effect, produce a good deal of income to the city of L.A. by virtue of the grocery receipts tax that was not available to the city until this particular point. I have been told, and hopefully the information is accurate, that the Office of Finance has collected approximately $230,000 in taxes by virtue of the letters that have gone out. What, to me, is scary, if you will, is that $46,000 in penalty and interest has been assessed. That's a 20% deal. That, for small businesses, can create bankruptcy. So, I would respectfully request the council to support the motion in protection of the small business people, in protection of the people who did not know they were violation. And again, I emphasize that this is for AB 63 violators, and I put that in quotes, AB 63 violators, only it has no bearing on current tax codes. As long as I have the floor, if I may, Mr. President. Okay. I would like to very briefly, very quickly, address and ask the council for their support in an ad hoc committee following the demise of BTAC. BTAC will land in about a year and a half.
You guys know how you feel on that. That is in a package that's either currently in committee or on its way to the full council. So, we can discuss it at that time.
Mr. President, council, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We do have two-speaker cards on this item, Mr. Brendan Huffman and Scott Schmidt.
Good afternoon. I'm Brendan Huffman with the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce in strong support. This motion is consistent with our goal of getting as many businesses in compliance with city tax law as possible. This will also encourage the very small businesses that are not in compliance to get in compliance, which will create a revenue stream in the future. Thank you. Scott Schmidt, on behalf of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, and we too are here in support, partially on the grounds that you're going to increase your net revenues by doing this, the really small businesses that we're talking about, it's going to cost you more to go after them than to waive the fees and have them send the checks in for the taxes that they actually owe. This underscores the reason that we need to do overall reform to come up with a tax system that is more equitable and easier to collect, and also why we need that ad hoc committee, so when that comes up, we also support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sure we'll see you again here. Ms. Misakowski.
Why don't we hear first from Councilmember Ruhl, who was the maker of the motion?
Okay. Ms. Ruhl, I also have Mr. Pacheco on the queue.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. I hadn't pressed my button because I was assuming I'd get to speak first. I will be very brief as well. Those of you that were here on Wednesday know that I introduced a rule 23 on Tuesday to address this issue. I don't know about you, but I've received calls, letters, I've been at dinner parties, you name it. People have come up to us and said, what was the city thinking when they sent this letter? It's confusing. We don't mind paying taxes if we're required to do so, but the goal, as you heard from some of the BTAC members today, the goal behind having this go forward was the importance of getting people into the system. It was not to ding them, it was not to go after them and threaten them with lawsuits, threaten them with a city attorney. It was about making sure people were educated about their ability and interest in being part of this tax system. The BTAC members and the mayor and the city council supported that. But what happened is, and if you've seen the letter, and I don't want to take time, I know you all have seen the letter that went out, but people were scared. I had people crying when they called my office, and they had been calling the Office of Finance, who didn't have enough staff to be able to handle the 150,000 letters that went out. People who lined up security guards told me that they were lined up outside this building to try to get in because they were scared that they were going to have the city attorney or the police come after them. We know that we don't want big corporate tax evaders to get away with not paying their taxes. This is not what we're talking about today. What we're talking about is individuals, you see in a form, that people who have responded, a housekeeper who made $5,000 the first year, $6,000 the second year, and maybe $7,000 the third year. That individual has to pay $511. Two weeks, they get this notice, or a month before Christmas. I think that what the goal we had in mind was a good one, to get people who evade the taxes to pay them. But it should not be borne on the backs of individuals who are trying to make a living and who didn't know. This is the first time we've had this information on AB 63, the first time some people knew that in fact, they were required to pay that business tax. That is what we should continue to do, is educate people about their responsibility. So, I asked today, and you'll see in my motion, that we waive that 40% penalty and interest on individuals, again, who had no idea, those gardeners, those housekeepers, people who did a small job, some people didn't even have a business. Some people didn't even have a business anymore and had been defunct for several years. But this was one of those things that just didn't go right in its implementation. We have a chance to stand up today for all of those individuals. As someone whose family has had a small business for 60 years, we've known that we have to pay taxes. We're educated about that. But some people who are new to this country, people who recent have become citizens, may not know, may not have understood, or other individuals who just tried to do a small job. So I think we have an opportunity to achieve both of our goals. One is to get individuals who should be paying their taxes to pay them, and two, to educate people about their rights and responsibilities. But to help people during this holiday season realize that the city attorney and the police are not going to be showing up at their door trying to collect those taxes. So, as Janice Hahn said, Scrooge, City Hall. I do want to ask if we could, I don't know if we can do this before the presentation or not, ask Office of Finance and the mayor's office to come up, but last things is that out of the 150,000 people who were sent letters, 121,000 of them were individuals. And again, we're trying to go out to corporations who have not paid their taxes. Once again, in the money that we get back, 75% is supposed to go to business tax reform, 25% is supposed to go to affordable housing or Housing Trust Fund, which is important. But I don't think the idea was that somebody who made $5,000 in a year and who may need affordable housing, that we're going to collect those funds on the backs of those individuals. So I ask for your support today and hope that we can have a presentation from the Office of Finance. I have a few questions after my colleagues speak.
Thank you, Ms. Ruhl. Well, let's have the staff come forward, but in lieu of a presentation, with consideration of the time, have them only respond to specific questions from members of the city council. Next on the queue is Ms. Misakowski, followed by Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, first of all, let me say that I agree with the substance of this motion, which is basically saying that the Office of Finance should have some degree of sensitivity, some latitude, particularly where it comes to the waiver and penalty issue, and particularly as it affects those lower-income earners, and particularly some single individual earners who were not aware of this. But let's be perfectly clear. BTAC, our chambers of commerce, VICA, United Chambers of Commerce in the Valley, for a number of years, through both this administration and the previous administration, said, "We have people who are paying taxes at the state level, paying taxes at the federal level, and not paying city taxes." We needed to do education. We went in a significant education mode over the last two years. We created an amnesty program in this city. We had radio announcements. We had chambers. We had business organizations going out and carrying that message, saying, "Folks, there's a bill that's going to pass in Sacramento." It didn't pass the first year we tried it, the second year we tried it. But concerted effort on the part of this city council, on the part of BTAC, on the part of our chamber organization, said, "Let's do that because there has to be this realization." Amnesty was successful. Amnesty created a whole lot of business filers who weren't paying at the city level, who came in and are now regularized. It, I think, netted, I mean, the $16 or $17 million on the first year of amnesty, minus a few administrative charges, were incurred. Having said that, I think it is appropriate that some very small business owners, individuals, et cetera, should have some ability to have forgiveness on those penalties, on waivers, and I would like to give the Office of Finance some degree of latitude in executing that up to a certain amount. I don't know that I would say that a business or an individual who's earned grocery receipts or is reporting grocery receipts of $100,000 a year falls into that category. So I had a problem with the motion by pegging it at $100,000. I would have much less problem if it were pegged at the $25,000, $30,000, maybe $40,000, something a little bit lower than $100. And again, letting that be discretionarily granted by the Office of Finance without coming, without needing a lot of other administrative red tape. And as well, I think we will hear from the Office of Finance that they are looking at a whole array of issues in certifying, verifying, looking at these people who were hit with this letter with a broad brush, and there's a whole lot of fine tuning and fine strokes that I think should be a part of it. So what I would like to do with this motion is amend it to suggest that the Office of Finance be given the authority to waive those penalty unilaterally up to a certain amount. As I say, $100,000 strikes me as too high, but to work with an individual, obviously get them into the system, let them know that they must now regularize and regularly pay that business tax every year as we move forward. But peg it at a lower amount, let the Office of Finance have that authority, as sanctioned by the council, and move forward.
Mr. Pacheco.
First, let me second the amending motion. Colleagues, my only concern is that there seems to be a disconnect with the conclusion of the motion and the intent of the motion. The conclusion is to waive up to $5,000 in penalties and interest, or penalties. But the premise of the motion is we want to help the low-income earners. And so there's a disconnect in my mind. If we want to help the low-income earners because they're less sophisticated and may not have been aware of the fact that they have to file taxes with the city, then the cap of $100,000 seems disproportionately high. And so that's why I supported Ms. Misakowski's amendment to, I think it was $25,000? Twenty-five or thirty? Something lower, about a third of the $100,000. Because then we are talking about the gardener or the individuals that the maker of the motion identified who may not be aware that they have this responsibility. So I would simply ask that you support the amendment that we not go for the $100,000 and empower the Office of Finance to handle these matters administratively.
Ms. Ruhl for a second time.
Well, two things I just wanted to make clear is, one, in an amnesty program, it means you knew that you had to pay the taxes, and you hadn't, and you come forward. These are people who've never gotten a letter from us, ever, ever, you know, seen. And I know we're in agreement on that, and it's, you know, I think that the one thing, a couple of things I disagree on the motion, on the amending motion, is, one, discretionary with the Office of Finance, partially because they had, and I'm sure you can talk about this, problems with dealing with the phone calls and the people coming in. If they have to process 130,000 waivers for that, which it potentially could be, I find that that it would be problematic, and that's why my recommendation was to do the blanket waiver, to allow, so that we could, again, the bottom line, the goal, Mr. Pacheco, is to get people to realize they owe the taxes and to pay the taxes, not to penalize them. And so that was my concern about that particular motion.
Would you have a problem then with just making it the blanket waiver, but peg it at the lower amount?
Well, I'm not sure I agree with the $25,000. I mean, it's also the difference between what is gross receipts and what is actually their income. I mean, I think, again, those are two separate items relative to what we're talking about. It's not income. It's about gross receipts tax. So that's my difference. And I'd like to, if we have, and I know the mayor's office, we talked to them about the $100,000 figure and about seeing that as a threshold, as long, again, as it was less than $5,000. So if possible, to have the presentations by city attorney and mayor's office and the Office of Finance.
Briefly, please. Any specific area you'd like them to cover in their presentation?
Well, I guess, you know, from the mayor's office perspective on this item as well, from the Office of Finance, really confirming what I have said, which is the kinds of problems that we did incur and that you have made in a presentation, I think, before, some of the issues I've outlined about, the number of individuals who called and how many people have actually responded, et cetera, would be helpful.
I think most of the members have followed this item through committees and through the press. If you can just concur with Ms. Ruhl's statements.
Pam Mooney from the Office of Finance, yes, we would concur. We would also concur with Councilmember Ruhl's contention that people would file a waiver and that would pose possibly an administrative burden. Just in looking at what we've received so far, prior to council taking any action, approximately 65% of people that have returned and said, "Yes, we are subject to the tax," are requesting a penalty fee waiver. That is part of our normal process. We generally would allow penalties to be waived in a situation where a person really did not understand or have knowledge of this applying to them. Although we have the authority to waive up to $5,000 with the approval of the city attorney, interest, we have never done so. We've always primarily only waived penalties. We've used interest as an incentive for people to come forward. In terms of what is the impact of waiving on gross receipts up to $100,000, we really have no idea of the people that we sent the letters to, what their income level is. For the most part, $100,000 would impose $1,000 in interest and penalty. So if we were to adopt this, on each individual, we would be waiving approximately $1,000 if they had a three-year tax liability.
But the principal that they would be paying would be?
The principal that they would be paying would be approximately $1,800.
And if I could?
What I want to clarify, that's right, that that would be only for the highest category, that's in our professional occupations. So it could be much less than that. In terms of what that actually means, we've received approximately 30,000 applications to date. Many of those are people that may have been in West Hollywood or in overlapping zip codes. We're just sorting through the mail, so it's very premature to actually know how many of these would qualify. Our initial estimate was that about 5% would be subject to the ordinance. And I think, colleagues, that's one of the problems, is that we didn't know who and what, all this information when we sent out the letter. So a lot of these individuals may not even be required to pay this, and that what we've required those now, they have to pay the fees and interest upfront, and then we reimburse them. And I think that is not the way that we should be dealing with the business tax. You do have the authority, as I know, up to the $5,000, and if I could ask Cecilia Estelano to just report on that and what's allowable and hold my last 45 seconds.
Thank you, Member Councilmember Ruhl. Cecilia Estelano, Special Assistant City Attorney. Just to confirm that the Office of Finance does have the authority to waive interest and penalties, and in fact, principle up to $5,000 with the approval of the city attorney. We have already pre-approved up to that amount. In addition, we have pre-approved, anticipating this debate, that individuals who are earning at the poverty level could have the interest and penalties waived. Again, the Office of Finance is correct. We don't know exactly what that would amount to in terms of interest and penalties, but because of the low-income nature of those individuals, it would be far less than $5,000 more than likely in terms of the actual interest and penalties. In addition, I want to also confirm Councilmember Misakowski's notion that it is important to do a blanket exemption. We believe that is the better practice for this council, because in the past, there have been amnesty programs that have been initiated and directed by this council. Therefore, we would recommend that if the city council set a level, whatever that level is, it would be a fixed level and that it would not be up to the discretion of the Office of Finance, but that this council would request that, whatever income level, that they grant blanket exemptions. And again, the city attorney, as a policy matter, is supportive of that request.
Colleagues, trying to respond to some of the concerns that individuals have raised about the threshold. One of the items that we can do today is ask the Department of Finance, Office of Finance, to come back with a threshold that you feel, again, is appropriate, that level that we can have that debate. I really do feel, though, that the blanket waiver is the way we should go and, again, find out this impact. I just, we need to send a very clear message to our businesses in the city of Los Angeles and our residents that we are not going to attack them. We want them to be part of the system. And I think that's the, you know, unfortunately, the letter that was written by the Office of Finance scared a lot of people. And I think we have to, as a council, take a position that clarifies that particularly and says, "We will allow for that blanket waiver and we will adopt a level," because I'm not sure that it's $25,000 or it's $50,000, and wear that to find some information. But I would like to say today that we do believe that there should be a blanket waiver and that we come back immediately with a threshold that is appropriate, that we can all agree on, but that we adopt today the motion that reflects that we believe a blanket waiver for those individuals at a certain threshold, and that we're sending a clear message to our business community.
Thank you, Ms. Ruhl. I have on the queue Mr. Reyes, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco for a second time, and Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to reaffirm that one of the most viable sectors in our economy and the city is the small business sector. So we have to handle this with kid gloves. When you put into perspective the diversity, language, culture barriers, that further complicates how we approach this very sensitive issue. And quite frankly, I'm trying to sort out in my mind what's real for the person who's trying to survive that at the subsistence level in this business. So what does a net mean versus gross in real-life terms? And I'm not sure if I have a clear understanding of that. My problem right now with this discussion is that I think we should provide this waiver or this, whatever it is we're going to do to help our small business person, but the details of the impact, for me, $100,000 seems very high. I know a family of four at $14,000 a year is poverty-level subsistence. You've got small business people who are selling the malas, they're selling little they can to survive, and then we're imposing this fee on them. So again, what are we really doing here? Do we have the time to allow for this waiver that Councilmember Ruhl, which I believe is a good approach to deal with the notion of relief, but technically and the approach, do we have enough time right now to reach real decisions and give enough guidance from a policy point of view to do this in a manner that's the most sensitive so that we do not scare away people and push them to the subeconomy and therefore even lose even more revenues, when people really want to stand up and feel free and good about what they're doing with their business? And that'd be considered a, you know, part of that whole undercurrent of illegal activity. So what can you advise us at this point? What would be the most diligent thing to do here? Can we oppose this waiver? And can we have more discussion on what it means, net versus gross, and what's the real threshold to deal with the impact of the small business person?
Well, Councilmen, certainly the waiver is a policy decision. What we could very quickly bring back are various levels of gross receipts or income in terms of, starting at $25,000, graduating up to $100,000. So you would actually be able to look at possibly the segment that you really would like to target. That, I think, we could bring back very quickly next week, if that would be helpful.
Great, yes, because it'll give you a clearer picture of how we're impacting the overall community and addressing, I think, the areas of concern that Councilmember Ruhl has expressed. So would that, I'd like to make that an amendment. I'd like to take action on that, Council President?
That's fine. Okay, I now have on the queue Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Labange, and Ms. Ruhl for a third time. Mr. Garcetti.
Okay, time is money, so I'll try to be short. I'll give my second 20-second speech. Small business is good, BTAC good, SCOTF laws bad, AB 63 very good, Councilmembers Ruhl and Misakowski both good. Blanket is good, but here's my twist. $50,000, I think, is also good, so look at that. In conclusion, money good, long speech is bad.
Mr. Pacheco.
I would simply ask that when we report back, or that when we do this waiver issue today, that we limit it to the 121,000 individuals and not give the corporations and partnerships the same courtesy, because obviously they filed federal employer ID, so they're sophisticated. So leave it to the 121,000. We'll come back, as I understand, we're going to come back on the threshold number. Okay, so I would just move to amend, just leave it to the 121,000 individuals and not give this to the corporations.
Okay, are these motions here, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco?
Right.
Is there a second? To the individuals?
No.
Is there a second? Mr. Reyes, seconds. We'll have to take a vote on that.
Mr. President, if you'd like to inform you of perhaps an equal protection problem with that exception?
Go ahead.
If our justification for doing this blanket waiver is a lack of notice, that would be very difficult to distinguish between like-situated entities, whether they be individuals or corporations or partnerships. So it's a legal matter the city attorney's office would recommend against doing this.
Okay, we'll take that into consideration. Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think one thing we've got to keep in context, AB 63, which allowed us in this place in the first place to be able to have the knowledge of all the other levels of government. I think the money that we raise from this does go for tax reform, which is extremely important. So I certainly want to salute everyone's concept and idea. I do want to ask the Office of Finance a question here. When you write a letter to 100,000 people, 200,000 people, what did you think and, you know, was your reaction going to be? Do you think you would be here on Friday afternoon on this date, being grilled by city council?
Obviously, no.
Okay.
I think that certainly we grossly underestimated the response to the letter. Certainly, we would have staggered, and in future mailings, we would not send out at any one time. I think we also were a bit surprised at... I think we also were a bit surprised at people not having any knowledge of that this may apply to them because of our previous outreach efforts, because of our previous amnesty. We felt that we had done a better job than perhaps we're seeing in terms of actually educating the public. And that's one of the reasons that initially, as soon as we started seeing these long lines and our phone calls were inundated, we reassigned staff from every area, we found additional bilingual translators to come forward to help, because we, it became very obvious that people really did not understand the impact.
I would just say, you know, education every day is important on this, and to be fair to everyone across, whenever doing a mass mailing, again, and for any city department, they should do a pick, some randomly, some zip codes in the area and start off, because then you won't get the overload. You know, just like water and power does not bill every citizen accordingly each time. They over, they push it every, they rotate it throughout the city. So not one neighborhood's paying their utility bill this month, next month, it's another neighborhood, and it rotates throughout. You've got to think a little like that, too, because this is a shock wave, but it also teaches us that we have to put tax reform high on our agenda next year and simplification of tax, which is so important, because a lot of this is confusion. We, I'd love to walk with you down the street and in my district and go through some of the shops to make sure that people are paying their taxes, because it's important that each of us step up and pay our taxes. And we have to find a way to simplify it. But I just wanted to support Councilmember Gruehl for her efforts here and bringing this forward and find a way that we all could agree on our next step, which is so important as we push for reforming taxes and being fair to everybody throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, Ms. Gruehl, to close.
Yes, thank you very much, and I promised Mr. Pacheco I would be quick. Just two things. One is, I think Councilmember Misakowski and I are on the same page about we asked the Office of Finance, sorry, Office of Finance to come back with us on Tuesday specifically with an appropriate threshold. It's also important to note that the 5,000 figure that we used was because it was part of the ordinance. In most instances, it will not be greater than $3,000, that they would have penalties and fees. That would be, again, the greatest amount with the principal that they would have to pay. So the 5,000 threshold was only with the existing ordinance that allows us to do that. And I also would ask for a no vote on Mr. Pacheco's amendment, based on the city attorney's recommendations on equal protection. So if Ms. Misakowski is fine with mine, that I will just amend my existing motion to reflect they will come back. But for all of you, this will send a clear message today to our businesses and our individuals. We want them here, we want them to pay their taxes, we're not going to penalize them now in that place, so.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl.
With, and I'm sorry, Ed, what was your friendly amendment? I apologize.
I wanted to get a breakdown of what we were doing in terms of the thresholds and how it affects different economies of scale.
That would be great, and I think that would be part of what the Office of Finance could be back on Tuesday. And I think one of the other items that we'll discuss in the future is hardship exemption, particularly for individuals who may make less than $14,000 income at all, whether or not it's appropriate to tax them as a business at the same time, and that'll come back at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Four words?
Equal protection aspect of the intent.
Okay, so with Mr. Pacheco's motion withdrawn, Madam Clerk?
Hate lawyers.
Remaining before us now?
I believe all the amendments were accepted as friendly amendments, and then the request to continue, or have this matter again on the calendar for Tuesday, which is December 17.
Okay, as a continuance?
Just to make clear, approving the policy today, having the threshold distinction issues come back on Tuesday, but the policy of a waiver is council action today.
Okay, and that does require votes. Everybody clear on that? If that is clear, then Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, so ordered by the council. Thank you very much, we'll see you again on Tuesday. I believe this concludes the special meeting agenda. Let us adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting agenda. Madam Clerk, I believe we only have closed-session items left.
Yes, Mr. President, and there are several, well, actually, most of them to continue. The city attorney's requesting that 18B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I B continue to Tuesday. And that would be only one matter on today, 18A.
Point of order, I have no problem with the continuance. These items were continued from Wednesday. Tuesday's agenda has 12 executive session, closed session, city attorney reports. If we continue these, that's going to make it 20 or more. So again, I'm going to beseech the council members to cancel luncheons. I think many of the committees have been canceled for Tuesday, but we've got to sit and get through these before the end of the year. Some of them have related issues pending in terms of trials that could cause things to happen unless we address them. So again, clear the schedules, and perhaps I will ask the council presidents to have the, each council office called, and the executive secretary who handles those appointments, made aware that appointments should be canceled Tuesday so we can get through this.
Sure, the executive assistants in every council district office will be called. How about we take a vote on this? Madam Clerk, please open the roll for all members who heard Ms. Misakowski's plea just a minute ago. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, all 10 members have heard our plea to clear your schedule for next Tuesday. So everybody will be expected, and the five, or the four who aren't here right now will be expected.
A friendly amendment that we have lunch brought in for all of us. There'll be no excuse.
Okay, we'll fund that lunch through savings and business tax collection. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, do you wish to clear the calendar, the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping, but keep a public comment until after closed session.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay, before going into closed session, I do have one public comment card from a Mr. Cecil Miller. This may or may not be relevant to one of the closed-session items. I'd ask that you come forward at this time.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. My item involves a closed-session item, and, lo, and it involves a closed-session item that's been continued on several occasions. It's about number three at this point. I'm a resident of California, I live and work here, and this matter's been continued on several occasions, and I would like the issue to be heard as soon as possible so that we can be, so that we can bring closure to this matter and get it off your calendar. Mr. Richard Arias is one of the attorneys on the case, and he's worked diligently to try to bring this matter to closure, and I don't want his work to go in vain, and I would like the issue to be heard as soon as you can get to it.
Okay, that is the item remaining before.
We will hear that one today, that was one that was not continued, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you for being here, and I apologize, Mr. Robert White had filed a card for the business tax reform item. You saw what just happened, I apologize, your card was placed under a different item. But if you want to address this now, here's your chance.
I'd like to thank the council for hearing me. I'm a general contractor, and most of my work is out of L.A. city, but I do a small amount of work. And I got one of those letters, and I was scared and horrified and everything that I got this letter. My accountants over the years, and I've had several different accountants and tax attorneys, told me, "You made under 5,000 in the city in labor, you're not going to have to pay this tax." And, but I went down to, I tried to make a telephone call, I couldn't get through, so I went down to Van Nuys office, the city of finance, and I talked to them, and they said, "You don't owe any money, because you made under 5,000 in labor." So, but they said, "This year, I'm going to be making over 5,000, I need to still get a license." And the next thing I find out is I'm getting penalized for all my past years, because as a general contractor, I just charge for labor. I do not charge for my materials. I get reimbursed for my materials, but I do not get charged. Well, I got penalized, and I had to pay over a $700 fee and fine and licenses, and they said, "You're also still looking for more fines," after they determined this. And I'm going, I'm horrified, after, for many years, never wanted to avoid taxes or anything, but I'd always been told by CPAs and stuff that I didn't have to, because I was within the law. And so there's tremendous amount of confusion here among contractors and independent people that are doing business about this tax. I don't think it's fair when my clients ask me to go out and purchase things for them, like apartment houses, and I spend a lot of money purchasing things, and all they're doing is paying me my labor, and I have to pay on the gross of what I purchased from my clients. And that's, I think that's a punitive tax, where I am the one that's suffering.
If I can ask you to conclude, please?
I'm sorry, what?
If I can ask you to wrap it up, sir, please?
Yeah, so I just want to thank you for considering this and maybe rescheduling how you guys do the gross tax. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We still have three additional speaker cards under public comment, but members, without objection, let's take care of the closed-session item and then return into open session and conclude public comment in just a few minutes. It conforms to California law, I will ask the guards to now clear the chambers as the council enters a closed session.
And, Mr. President, there is an excuse on the.
Madam Clerk, matter before us, please.
Item number 18A is settlement in the case of Miller versus City of Los Angeles, and that settlement is in the amount of $150,000.
Please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved, forthwith, please. Members, let's now return to public comment. I want to, before calling up the speakers, thank Mr. Pacheco for returning from an engagement. He was excused from council to attend, so if he has to leave, I just want to thank Mr. Pacheco for helping us maintain a quorum. The council calls forward Mr. Michael St. Hill, followed by Mort Allen and David Reams. Your opportunity to address the council.
Hello, my name is Michael St. Hill. I'm going to deviate from a little, from what I intended to say, but first, I want to name Mr. Weiss, Councilman Weiss is definitely a racist, but I'll explain that later down.
Mr. St. Hill, if you can keep your comments focused to matters within our jurisdiction.
Yes, I'd like to say, you must remember, in L.A. or across America, police departments normally demonstrate a use for federal funds as, by saying there are gangs everywhere. And this is my deviation. And I ask the federal government, the Congress and the Senate, and the president to realize that when L.A. Police Department cry, "There are gangs, there are gangs, there are gangs," to give us money, more money, more money, first, to investigate, to find out whether there are gangs, and crime happens, and to realize that police departments do demonstrate a need by crying gangs. And L.A. Police Department is a very, very dangerous and devious entity. And I would like to say to the council here, which I believe is a very liberal council and not a conservative council, to realize that, to become more conservative and to be more just and be more responsible to the city and to the city of L.A., that not everybody's liberal, and not everybody except gay males, and to realize that the L.A. Police Department is 50% gay males. I'm not, I don't have any problems with the gay females, but the gay males are very dangerous individuals.
Sir, if I may ask you to conclude, please.
And I would like to, I would like to say, without going any farther, for L.A. Police, for the council, to take a close look at the central division and the dangerous activity that's going on, the stealing and the drug activity going on from the police department, by the police.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mort Allen.
I know you're all too tired to hear me, but I just, I just want to say that last Tuesday, we had the yearly VICA Business Meeting, and Wendy and Alex and Dennis were there, and they had great ovations. I mean, it's turned around the valley, the way you three are hitting the streets all the time, and you saw what was going on. We had Henry Cisneros talking about the kind of housing we needed, which is the first-time buyer, $200,000 for your deputies, for the firemen and the police, the people, which he's, Henry's built, what, about 500 or 600 in the valley, I think it was, so far? And instead of all the rhetoric about the poor people housing for the instant ghettos, and I think that we've got to understand that beyond everything else, the consensus of opinion is that we need the other 4,000 police officers. And I think it's not up to the taxpayers, I think it's up to the businesses in this city that are making the money because of all the people. And we've been working on a program here, which, where I think we can raise the money just through people that are making more money because of more business and more congestion, i.e. the automobiles that are being sold, the outdoor advertising. But I think we've got to focus on the middle-class housing and on the, on getting more police officers in the valley, because there's a new movement starting, which we're trying to get rid of again, and it's only because Richard Close and a few people are unhappy. But they're rag and file, and I think that you three need to be saluted for being out there night and day, meeting the people.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Our final speaker is Mr. David Reams.
Good afternoon, council. My name is David Reams, and I have 20 years' experience working with captive wildlife at the Los Angeles Zoo and other zoological facilities. I am also an SEIU Local 347 shop steward for the Los Angeles Zoo's animal keepers. Today, however, I'm speaking to you today as a concerned citizen. And I'm also speaking to you as the volunteer campaign director for a grassroots, nonpartisan political campaign called the Citizens Campaign for Conservation and Humane Reformation of Zoos, or CREES for short. CREES is a coalition of ordinary citizens. The campaign has been endorsed by numerous political organizations, conservation organizations, and animal welfare organizations. Some of those endorsements are the Green Party of L.A. County, the L.A. Greens, the San Fernando Valley Greens, the Cal State University of Northridge Greens, Save the Whales, Mark Berman of the Earth Island Institute, I M M P, and Ava Park of Orange County People for Animals. CREES is a coalition of ordinary citizens, the CREES Coalition of Ordinary Citizens and endorsement organizations represent perhaps over 30,000 registered voters in Los Angeles County alone. These citizens are concerned about how the Los Angeles Zoo has been managed historically. These citizens are demanding that the city of Los Angeles hire an ethical, conservation-minded, and humane-minded zoo director for the Los Angeles Zoo. It is time for the Los Angeles Zoo to be reformed and provide a new and more admirable service to the community. Citizens no longer want the zoo to be run like an amusement park, but rather more like a national park. The Los Angeles Zoo must evolve from the substandard animal facility it once was to become a wildlife sanctuary and a center for conservation throughout the world. The citizens of Los, the citizens--
If I may ask you to conclude, please?
I'm just about done. The Citizens Campaign for Conservation and Humane Reformation of Zoos and all the citizens who support the campaign are asking you today to please make a commitment to finding an ethical zoo director for the Los Angeles Zoo. Thank you. And if I'm allowed to, I would like to read the petition that I'm presenting to you today into the record. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. You have the representative of the fourth district there, Councilmember Tom Labange. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam? Okay, go ahead and come forward and please introduce yourself. That was all the cards that I had.
I'll be real brief. I submitted a card, Kevin Singer from the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. God, I kind of feel like we're being left out. I submitted a card and--
Mr. Singer, I do have your card here, it was on an item that had previously had a public comment, or, excuse me, a public hearing held in committee. So there's a public hearing in committee, we don't duplicate the public hearing here at the full council.
Okay, then I, then I apologize.
Just so you know what happened.
Yeah, it's an education process to me. I'm also a Superior Court receiver, so I'm very familiar with the REAP program as well, because I work for the courts, and oftentimes, when properties get taken back from owners, they fall into the court's jurisdiction. So I'm familiar with the intricacies. I gather from today that item number 17, consideration of the housing and community development, number two was removed. Is that, is that correct? That was the $50 assessment to owners?
Item number 17, I believe, was approved--
With number two removed?
No, it was approved as the report is written.
Oh, it was, then. Oh, it was then. Was it removed or no?
No.
Okay, so where does it go from here, just for education process?
Okay, it goes to the mayor for approval, unless the mayor vetoes, and it would return to the council for reconsideration.
Okay, no problem. Anyways, I just want to tell you, I'm just getting oriented to the political process here, and I'm very impressed with what everybody does here. You're a real asset to the city, and thank you for all the detail and the good work that you guys do.
Well, thank you for being here. If you have further questions, I think one of the legislative deputies would be able to help you out. This once again concludes public comment for today's meeting. Welcome back, Mr. Holden. Members, unless, Madam Clerk, there's further business, I believe it's time for announcements. Mr. Zine for an announcement.
I have a big announcement tonight, Valley of the Kings, Taft versus Birmingham for the city finals for football. Councilman Burnson, who represents Lake Balboa, Birmingham High, I used to represent that area, so I would have had two schools that I'd be cheering for, but I'll be at that game tonight cheering Taft to victory, as they are in Woodland Hills, my district, but I wish the best for the two Valley schools that are now in the championship in the final game that will be held tonight at the L.A. Memorial Coliseum at 8:00 PM, Taft versus Birmingham for the football city finals, and may my school, Taft, win. Thank you.
Other announcements? Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I want to offer an apology. The Speaker of the Assembly was talking to the American Society of Public Administrators, and they asked me to come down to introduce him, having worked for the county, and that's what they, in the process right now, giving a speech on the state affairs of the state budget, and hopefully, by my appearance, we'll be able to have them not hurt us too much in Sacramento, and that's ongoing as I speak, and I tried to, of course, get your attention on that one, but I had to move out. Sorry about that. In any case, that's what's going on, and with the special session having been called by the governor, we will see some hard times, but under your leadership and mayor and others, I'm sure we'll come to some kind of a mutual agreement.
Thank you. Other announcements? Adjournement motions? Please rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I would ask us all today to adjourn in the memory of Angela Pop, who is the mother of Elena Pop, who many of us know as a great housing advocate in the city of Los Angeles who works with Legal Aid. Her mother was a courageous woman who left the safety of her native Mexico in 1968 to make a better life for her children here in Los Angeles, and having been a single mom, she had a special place in her heart for mothers who were raising their children on their own. There will be a memorial service in Pachanga to celebrate her life. She loved her home, and she loved a good party, so both will be done at her home, and members are invited, 3282 Romulus Drive, and members of the public who might have known Angela in Los Angeles. She survived by her children and by many friends, and may she rest in peace.
I'd like to second that.
Mr. Hayes.
I just want to say that for my colleagues, Elena Pop is one of those warriors who, working for Legal Aid, is a true advocate for the tenants who are suffering these intolerable conditions, and I felt it was important that we recognize that. Great work she does, and I want to be on that adjournment motion.
Thank you. Other tributes? Ms. Sikowski.
I would like to ask the council to adjourn in memory of Frank Wilson. Frank was a 40-year resident of Pacific Palisades who recently lost his belt with cancer, and he died at the age of 68. Frank had a very long career working with the community. He, his profession was as an attorney, he worked downtown most of those years with corporate firms, but he gave back to the community and was actually the legal advisor at our community council in Pacific Palisades, and I think those who have looked at neighborhood councils have seen that a lot of them always want to turn to attorneys, and what does the city attorney say, and what are our legal advice? Frank provided that as a community advocate for many, many years, so much so that in the late '90s, he actually was asked to become chair of the community council in Pacific Palisades, which he did for a two-year term, never forgetting his own roots, which is his homeowner presidency in a community called the Miramar area in the Pacific Palisades. He was an advocate, a lover of the Santa Monica Mountains, enjoyed it, helped protect